APAs? Can we do two separate ones?
Yeah.
Doesn't APAs make it?
Um.
APAs most about sure as a mission, making those state relationships. We can help volunteer, we can volunteer to help.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we haven't done that too much. I think you're still doing this.
Are you guys all set? Hazel, you guys all set?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June twenty eighth Select Board meeting. And we are actually starting this meeting, which will be a joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Board. At the end of this joint meeting, the Planning Board will adjourn and reconvene their regular meeting across the street. So I do call here at six o'clock, the joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Board to order. And would ask that all those that are able to please join me in rising for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ian, do I need to formally call the Planning Board?
I called it to order as a joint meeting, so I think we're all set and covered there. We'll reflect that in the meeting minutes as the, we'll, we'll keep the minutes for the joint meeting. Or Sheila will. Thank you. So we call the joint meeting, the Select Board and Planning Board to order for the purpose of appointing a Planning Board member to fill a vacancy. I think as both boards are aware, Tim Kaler resigned from the Planning Board effective June fifteenth. And under mass general law, the Select Board and the remaining members of the Planning Board can appoint someone to fill the vacancy until the next annual town election, which will be this March of two thousand and twenty-three. So we did receive letters of interest from four individuals for this position. Our plan for tonight is that for each candidate, we will have them come up, give each of you a couple of minutes for an opening statement. And then we have four questions that the Planning Board Vice Chair, who is chairing the Planning Board this evening in the absence of the Chair and myself, will go back and forth with those questions. Hopefully keep, to keep this moving and so we're not here all night, we'll try to keep this to between ten and fifteen minutes for each candidate. We can follow that up with the boards for any clarification on those questions, but the plan is not to go into additional questions. We really want this to be fair, each candidate to basically have the same questions asked and evaluated on for that decision. At the conclusion of going through the four candidates, which by posting, we're going to do it by alphabetical order, by last name, the two boards will then discuss debate and then vote. And it is a vote of the combined boards for that decision for the appointment to fill that vacancy. So before we move forward with that, are there any questions from either boards about the process?
Yeah, when you, can you just clarify, it is a combined vote, so it's a majority, simple majority of the combined?
Of the eight, of the eight of us that are here, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not each individual board voting, it's a combined joint appointment. Thank you. Any other questions?
What happens if it's a four-four tie?
That's gonna be an interesting one, so we'll deal with that if we get to it. I think it's, unfortunately, the Chair of the Planning Board had a, a family emergency, so could not be here tonight. Apologies for that, which would have been the nine, so we'll deal with the eight and we'll see where we come to in the vote, but we'll figure that out if we get there, or try to figure it out. So thanks for the question. Unfortunately, I don't have a answer. I think it's, it's what we'll deal with.
Ian, the motion just wouldn't pass.
Right, so just, so either we have a different motion or go back to discussion, whatever, so to figure it out. Anything else, other questions, besides stumping me with that one? Okay, so what we're gonna ask for the candidates is hopefully not, make it brief, not to keep it uncomfortable, we're gonna ask you to come to the podium up here. We ask the questions that, that give you two-minute statements introducing yourself, really talking about your, where your interest is in the Planning Board. And then we will go in, as I said, to the, to the four questions. Try to keep your responses as, to like two to three minutes if possible, but we don't wanna cut you off if you feel like there's more you wanna say there, but, but trying to keep it concise there. And as I said, that at the end of those four questions allow you have a minute to two minutes for any closing statements you may, may wanna make. They do ask when you come forward that you speak in the two microphones there because people do listen from home and it, they need to be speaking into the mics for them to hear you. So with that, I will ask John Gelsic to come forward as the first candidate. Good evening, John.
Good evening. Adjust these microphones. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm John Gelsic, Six Baxter Street. I'll do town meeting rules. I am the principal planner in Hopkinton, so planning is kind of in my blood. It's also my profession, obviously. I have been in Westboro for about seven years, and we love it here, and we're looking to find another house so we can stay here long-term. One of the reasons I wanna be on the Planning Board is to plan for those next fifty to sixty years that I'm gonna be here. My kids are gonna grow up here, my family's gonna be here, we're gonna set down roots, and I wanna make this the town that I'd be proud of for my kids to come back to. My three priorities, I would say, for planning is affordable and attainable housing, preservation of open space and natural resources, and community development. And community development, not in a commercial versus residential sense, but building a community itself with the people. I think Planning Board has a unique opportunity to do that, and I think I'm well-qualified for that role. And I am happy to answer any questions and further explain my background, but I think my letter was pretty, pretty strong in that one, so.
Perfect. Thank you, John.
I'll keep it short.
Hayes, okay with you? I'll do one and three, and you wanna do two and four?
Absolutely.
Perfect. I actually picked the ones that the questions are shorter, so. So the first question, can you share with us, John, what you know about the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Board?
I would say I'm pretty familiar with that. I do it on a weekly basis. I staff the Planning Board in Hopkinton, so I'm the one that intakes all the applications, reviews them, sends them out for distribution to get comments from all the different boards, work with the developers, answer questions. We established a pre-submission meeting in Hopkinton that wasn't there before I was there. And so that basically brings the developers in, gives us an idea as to what they're trying to do. It's really a department head meeting, so all the department heads have a chance to ask questions and really figure out all the issues in the applications before they come before the Planning Board to make that process easier. And then during the Planning Board process, you know, we are reviewing applications for site plans, special permits, and then also undertaking open space and recreation plans, affordable housing, production-type plans, and the master plan, which was done in two thousand and seventeen, so I wasn't involved in that, but that is also a responsibility that I would, I would have moving forward.
Great, thank you.
All right. Planning Board members can only take action or make decisions as a body and have no individual authority. What skills or traits do you have that would contribute to the effectiveness of the Planning Board?
One of the skills I have is knowledge of planning principles and understanding how those are put into practice, not just theoretically, but in real time. And another is just working with developers to understand the issues that underlie the projects that they're, they're working on, and then what the community feedback would be from those projects, and trying to work a solution between the two of them, should that exist. I am very comfortable with discussing projects with developers in a public setting and really getting to the bottom of what the issues are to resolve them, and I think that would be something that would probably come in very handy here.
Thank you.
What is, I don't know why I'm asking this question, but I will, but what is your experience with permitting and zoning as it relates to land use? And this could be as an approval authority or as an applicant?
So in my previous life, I was with an engineering firm in Southborough. So I've seen it from both sides of the aisle. I've seen it on the town side and what the town looks for and what the, what the decision would really include to benefit the town, and I've also seen it from the developer's side to see what issues they're facing when they're not in front of the Planning Board, when they're talking about it amongst themselves, and really how those two different sides can come together to come, to get a good solution for any project that comes before the Board. So I, I think having both perspectives really helps.
Great, thank you.
This is sort of a three-part question, so I'll take them one at a time. The Planning Board recently approved a master plan document in two thousand and twenty-one and is currently working on the prioritization and implementation of those goals through an implementation committee. What is your familiarity with the town's master plan?
I was on the Housing Subcommittee with you. So I'm very familiar with it.
Secondly, how would you contribute to its implementation?
How is the Implementation Committee being organized, I guess would be my question?
It's gonna be an appointed committee by the Planning Board.
So I would be willing to offer my time and expertise on any of the committees that would be well-suited for that, participate in any subcommittees on any specific topic, and I guess really just volunteer my time as best I can.
And thirdly, what areas in the master plan are you most interested in and why?
I think because I spent time on the Housing Subcommittee, I would be interested in doing work along with that Subcommittee, that Implementation Subcommittee. I'm on the Open Space Preservation Committee, so open space is also a big thing for me. And community development and community building would be something I'd be really interested in.
Thank you. And if you'd like to make any closing remarks?
Nope, I just thank both boards for allowing me to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any clarifying questions from either, anybody on either board?
I have one very short question. Since you're the town planner in Hopkinton, is there anything that you think might cause a concern which might affect your participation in the Westboro Town Planner?
So do you mean ethically or time-wise, or both?
Well, I guess we'd cover both.
So I was actually thinking about this question before this, this interview, I fear that's what you wanna call it. And ethically, I don't think there's gonna be any issues, because when developers come before the Planning Board, they've pretty much selected one town or the other, and so they're not gonna be making anybody compete against the other town. I think that's really the Economic Development Committee or Town Manager's Office that handles that, that type of timeline. Time-wise, Tuesdays are my, are late days in Hopkinton, so there may be an issue there, but I've gotten it from the town manager that it may be okay, or it should be okay to participate in Planning Board meetings on those Tuesdays, so it really shouldn't be an issue. I'm not too worried about it, I think, I think it'll work out.
Okay, fine, thank you. And I'd just like to point out to the other applicants, this is a particular question for John and will not apply to the other applicants.
Anything else? Great, John, thank you very much. Okay, next, Justin Lundberg. Good evening.
Good evening. I think I know most of you up here, so Justin Lundberg, twenty-four Adams Street. I moved to Westboro, two thousand and seven timeframe, so I own a house, I own some commercial properties and some other residential properties in town. I've served on the Zoning Board of Appeals for about ten years, Conservation Commission for about thirteen, fourteen years in that timeframe. Why the Planning Board? I, I think it's an interesting opportunity to try and blend the experiences I have in both boards and see a different side of the, you know, the planning elements that the town has. On the Zoning Board, we're quasi-judicial and we don't get a lot of flexibility in, in what we're doing, it's a straight application of rules to fact patterns. Conservation Commission, we're governed by the wetlands bylaws for the town and the state, and I think the Planning Board is a slightly different board that would, you know, allow me to see a different element of what, you know, what happens in the, in the town and help plan for the future of the town. Obviously, I'm invested in it personally and, you know, from a business point of view, so it's a, you know, position I've always been interested in.
Great, thank you. So first question, which you probably already heard, what, what do you know about the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Board?
So I, I mean, I, aside from the obvious answers, I've, I've appeared in front of dozens of Planning Boards. I've worked with the Planning Board members in the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, and I take the responsibility, the Planning Board is an important one for the town to balance the economic interests of the town, the social interests of the town, open space, conservation, housing. It's a really all-encompassing board that has a number of competing issues that faces it on a daily basis, and I think that balancing all of those issues and trying to come out with the best possible outcome for the town presently and going forward is really the largest role the Planning Board has.
Great, thanks.
Planning Board members can only take action or make decisions as a body and have no individ, has no individual authority. What skills or traits do you have that would contribute to the effectiveness of the Planning Board?
I, I mean, I think just my experience in working with developers, working with applicants, I think we, we see a lot of the same faces over and over in front of the boards and having a comfort level in, in working with them already and, you know, looking forward to working with them in other, in other roles. Being able to create compromise between individuals and being able to separate, I think what's, in key issues versus what really are just distracting issues for, for topics would be a, a skill I could help bring to the Planning Board, as well as decision drafting for the Zoning Board. I've been drafting decisions for the last, you know, ten years on the Zoning Board, and I'd like to be able to help with that as well on the Planning Board level if it's needed.
Following on, your experience with permitting and zoning as it relates to land use, it could be as an approval authority or as an applicant?
Yeah, so as, as an applicant, again, I've appeared in front of dozens of boards as general counsel for a couple of different businesses, and I've represented businesses and homeowners in, in front of all different boards in different towns across Commonwealth and also on the administrative side, being on the Zoning Board and the Conservation Commission, I deal with the incoming applicants on a, you know, weekly or every other weekly basis, depending on what, what boards are meeting when, so it's not something I'm not used to.
The Planning Board recently approved a master plan document in two thousand and twenty-one and is currently working on the prioritization and implementation of those goals through an implementation committee. What is your familiarity with the town's master plan?
So I was on the Master Plan Committee and I was on the zoning bylaw review, zoning bylaws section of that committee, so I'm certainly familiar with it. Went through the same process in Southborough when I was on the Zoning Board in Southborough prior to being in Westboro. And, you know, master, creating the draft is just the start of the process for the master plan. Implementation is obviously the key in it, and so, yes, I'm familiar with it.
And what areas of the master plan are you most interested in and why?
My knee-jerk reaction to that are the zoning bylaws. That is the framework which governs the town. You know, one of the striking things that we hear, at least I hear often from a zoning point of view, is how can we revitalize the downtown area? And it really starts with the zoning and the rules that are in place for what we can put in the downtown area and how can we can encourage the revitalization of the downtown. So automatically, you know, from, from a zoning point of view, the rules are important. From the conservation side, certainly open space and recreation are also important, just because I have familiarity in those, but whatever, you know, certainly I'm not opposed to volunteering my time, and so whatever role is important between, or most needed, I'd be happy to step into.
Thank you. And have you had a closing statement for us?
No, I, I think that I was excited to see that there was an opening. I know it's, it causes a little bit of tumult to lose a board member, and I, I think that the reason that I applied for it was I can hit the ground running. I know the, the cases that are before the Board, although if you're not a member of the Board, you can't mull in and actually vote on the cases, but I can be an active participant in understanding a lot of the applications that are before you. I understand the bylaws and it, there wouldn't be any learning curve, being able to step in for the next seven months and, you know, helping, helping out and work with the other Planning Board members.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any clarifying questions or anything from either board? Yep, Alan?
This question's sort of unique because you're sitting on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Knowing that the actions or the decisions of the Planning Board often end up before the Zoning Board of Appeals, or there are instances where projects move from the normal permitting process into the comprehensive permit process, do you feel that there could be any conflict of interest?
So I, I was trying to think back. I don't think we've ever had an opportunity to oppose or overrule a decision of the Planning Board. Obviously, on the Zoning Board, the Zoning Board has the power of variance and can vary any of the bylaws as it seems appropriate to, you know, within the confines of the statutory framework. I, I don't generally recall any situations, and if there were, it's less than single digits where we would actually be reviewing or taking an action that would be superseding or in opposite to what the Planning Board would be doing. So I, I don't see that as an issue. If it were to happen, there is, the Zoning Board is a five-member board with two alternates. We have excellent attendance, the alternates are there every, every time, and it wouldn't be a hardship for me to have to recuse if there happened to be something that came in front of both boards where I felt I wasn't able to present an impartial, you know, decision-making person.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Great, thank you, Justin. Greg Reed.
Good evening, my name's Greg Reed. I live at two twenty-one West Main Street. Moved to Westboro about five years ago from Hingham, spent a long time on the South Shore. My brother had moved to town about ten years ago, and so my son now lives here too, in town, so I'm a little bit different. I am someone who's not on any boards or any public speaking. I own a large site construction company, so I bring a little bit of a different viewpoint for you, and I would say probably most of my experience would be more on the technical construction side of things, and that's why I wanted to get involved and come on down and see if I could be of any help. But it's my first time kinda being in a council area, so all new to me.
We don't bite, so.
Exactly.
So Greg, kicking off then, can you share with us what you know about the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Board?
I've been in front of many of them. I spend a lot of time as an owner and developer. I work with a lot of large owners and developers. My clients are probably most of the top ten biggest builders in Massachusetts. We do a lot of different work, and I usually work in a lot of team environments where we are in front of Planning Boards or different boards in order to move all kinds of projects, residential, commercial, industrial, through the system. So I'm usually brought in to kinda go over feasibility, constructability, that kind of stuff for the boards and explain to them how it would work. So that's a little bit more of my role and how I've dealt with the Planning Board, and, and I understand kind of meeting their town laws, and they're all a little bit different at every town we've been in front of, so it's getting to know the local laws and how does the project fit into that town and into their development process.
Thank you.
All right. Planning Board members can only take action, make decisions as a body and has no individual authority. What skills or traits do you have that would contribute to the effectiveness of the Planning Board?
I spend most of my time in a team environment, as I was saying. I am an unrestricted mass builders license holder. I do a lot of time developing budgets and doing a lot of the feasibility and constructability projects for my clients and then put them actually into action. So I'm also have the unique ability to know where most of the tricks of the trade are when the develop, when the developers approach a board and try to slide a few things by. So I offer a little bit more of a backside. So I offer a little bit more of a backside into the process for the board to help out. Like I said, I would just see myself as being part of the board. Look, they cut me off already.
Keep going.
So I just see myself as being part of the team and working with the board to achieve whatever goals or offer as much assistance as I can.
Thank you.
Can you talk about your experience with permitting and zoning as it relates to land use? As the others, it could be as an approval authority or as an applicant?
Applicants, we have dealt with everything from, we've designed and built golf courses, racetracks, industrial parks, multifamily residential. I've built and owned single-family residential developments myself. We've spent quite a bit of time in just basically trying to find a good fit for a piece of land in a certain town. That's where we, we spend most of our efforts in what we do. And I think that for me, that's kind of my passion about working with that.
Great, thank you.
The planning board recently approved a master plan in 2021 and is currently working on the prioritization and implementation of those goals through an implementation committee which is to be appointed. Do you have any familiarity with the town's new master plan?
Not that much. That's not what I do. So I would, I would review it and become familiar with it. But at the moment, I don't have a whole lot of the specific Westboro master plan knowledge.
How would you contribute to the implementation of such plan?
Working with incoming developers or owners or, you know, it's interesting, we hear a lot of stuff and I work with a lot of people who talk about affordability and a lot of different components of construction. And we do a lot of brownfield work and trying to restore community, areas and communities that maybe are blighted and try to be repositioned. So we have extensive experience in trying to get those things brought into a new master plan. You know, a lot of old factories, what do you do with old factories and that kind of stuff. And try to, and I think Westboro has some of that here. You know, it's been going on at the old state hospital. And I same questions about like downtown, how do you really get a downtown to come back? What can you do? What's constructable and what is truly able to be built in order to be sustainable and hopefully a vibrant town center, you know, for many years to come?
Is there a particular area of the master plan that you might be most interested in dealing with?
I'd like to see, you know, something that I think comes up more and more now is that the, from our side is, you know, is the town able to be self-sustainable? You know, and it's great to have, you know, goals about open space and affordability and all kinds of stuff. But, you know, for older people there, can taxes be reasonable? Can you have a town that people want to be at? It's got great school systems. It's got, you know, a great place to come home to for the people that are there. I think that it's, I lost my train of thought. Don't do a lot of public speaking.
That's okay.
Do you have any closing remarks or additions?
None at all. Any questions?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions from anybody or follow-up from the board?
Yes. That's okay. So this question has been asked of the other applicants, but just given your present work, how would you, or do you foresee any issues with conflicts of interest, you know, with projects that would be coming here and how would you handle that?
No, I don't do any work in Westboro. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't see any conflict. I own the company, so I'm able to decide if I want to come here Tuesday nights.
Great, thank you, Greg. Daniel Schur.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Daniel Schur, I live at 26 Haskell Street. I've been a resident of Westboro over 20 years. Currently the select board's delegate to Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. And you just reappointed me, thank you very much. Several years prior to moving to Westboro, I was involved, I was on the local planning board in Oxford, actually before Children, so that was a while ago. And I was also on the regional planning commission. So I'm very familiar with the planning board, the process, your special permits. And I have read through some of the Westboro bylaws, but 100 pages was a little much to go through without falling asleep. But nothing wrong with the bylaws. So I am trying to familiar myself with that. I was very excited about the opportunity, especially after reviewing the new master plan. And that was one of the reasons why, why I applied for this vacancy. So I do have some planning background in that, in the manner of sitting on a board many years ago. I do understand the concept of what the planning board does and what their limitations are and what their charge is for the town. And just excited to put my hat in the ring.
Great. So just to follow on what you just said there, can you share with us a few things, what you know about the roles and responsibilities of the planning board here in Westboro?
Well, foremost, they have to uphold the zoning bylaws. And if it's not in the zoning bylaws, it has to be done by right and has to be done, and can't be, certain things can't be done if it's not in the zoning bylaws. And therefore, it would require a change in the zoning bylaws, things going to the town meeting, having it approved, to change the zoning bylaws. And I take it that's one of the things with the new master plan, there'll be some changes to be able to modify the bylaws to match the new long-term goal. The planning board also acts as a special permit granting authority, which is a very important part because there are certain things that require the special permit, especially of the overlay districts that Westboro has. And those are the primary things the planning board does.
Great, thank you.
Planning board members can only take action or make decisions as a body with no individual authority. What skills or traits do you have that would contribute to the effectiveness of the planning board?
Having sat on a board before and having sat on other boards in work, I understand that. I also understand that the planning board has to be very clear with the open meeting law only to discuss things at a planning board meeting. Otherwise, you open yourself up for lawsuits and other things of that nature.
So what is your experience with permitting and zoning as it relates to land use? Talked about the planning board as approval authority a while back or also as, or perhaps as an applicant?
Except, having been on a planning board before, I do understand the permitting and the granting authority and public hearings and the whole litany of things you go through. And also conflict of interest, if you're in butter, all those things I've dealt with.
Okay. The planning board recently approved a master plan document in 2021 and is currently working on the prioritization and implementation of those goals through a committee. What is your familiarity with the town's master?
I did, I did review it and read through it. There's also, it's a lot in there. Also remember at the town meeting, we voted, I don't know, $16,000 to help implement it, to hire a consultant to implement it. And the planning board has a goal of five years to implement their top priorities, I believe. Very excited about some of the transportation initiatives that were in there and also making it a walkable downtown. I think it's really a diamond in the rough that, that Westboro has. And the New England Village concept is very important. And I applaud the planning board for pushing that. If we're going to shed using automobiles, which you had a lot of things about sustainability and everything else, we have to be able to transition to things that allow people to walk, to get to places. It's also very exciting because a lot of young families that I know in Westboro that have moved in, a lot of them want to move downtown so that they are living in a walkable community. So that's, that's part of the part that I really applaud the, the master plan committee that put it together.
All right. So you said your interests were transportation and walkable downtown. Are there any other interests? I'm just sort of putting these together because you kind of answered.
Those are, those are two highlights because it affects everybody. You know, transportation affects everybody. You know, whether it's walkable transportation, bike or car, we all are, we all have to use our cars because we have very few options. So developing the downtown will create parking and going to places. But also it, it's, it's a major part of what we all live with, you know, transportation. I don't know if I answered that well, but I'll try.
And is there a specific way that you could contribute to the implementation?
I, I think I would be helpful on the transportation side. Once again, I sound like a broken record. It's something, it's a passion of mine. It's something that I've been involved in. Once again, years ago, and as on the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, I was on a transportation subcommittee along with the executive board. It's something that affects everybody's life and we all, I just think that I'd have some, some attributes that would help on that committee.
Thank you.
Any closing comments?
I was happy to see other people applying and I'm very happy that Westboro is still a community that people want to be involved in. It's, it's very important because boards, you know, the quote unquote, all politics is local, but also community is local. And it's very important that Westboro maintain committees and get people involved. Thank you. And I appreciate everybody that's on boards right now.
Could I just follow up just quickly on something? I just wanted to say that we have four really very good candidates tonight and unfortunately we can only pick one, but I hope that the other three will become engaged if they are not in various boards and committees, which we have vacancies on. So I just was very pleased myself to see all your expertise coming through here. And I hope that you will, we look forward to having you participate in other town activities.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions from my other board members? Yes, yep.
No.
No, for Daniel.
Yeah, I'm also.
Thank you. Well, thank you again. I follow what Hazel said there for your willingness to come before us to fill this, this one vacancy. At this point, we're going to open it up to the boards for kind of deliberation discussion.
Do you want me to start?
If you want to.
All right. Never one to be shy. When I looked at the applicants and their resumes and their letters of interest and then looked at the board and the kinds of things we've needed, I'm a little concerned about the makeup of the board at the moment because we have a real estate appraiser, a commercial real estate person, and a local real estate person. And I think we need to broaden our membership in the board to work efficiently. I'm a lawyer with zoning experience and so my inclination is to look for someone that might have more planning experience. And this is one of the reasons when I looked at these, I really appreciated listening to all the, the applicants and the various things that they can do. And I guess I am leaning towards more someone that has planning experience, which I think we really can use with an overall view for the planning type of things. So I'm leaning a little bit in that direction, I would say, at this particular time.
I have the same feeling as Hazel, to be honest. I want, not, I guess, an industrial person, you know, you know, it kind of makes sense to broaden the board, to have someone with, someone who's doing it on a day-to-day basis. That's my opinion on this. With some experience who can, is adapting with a community. I just think it kind of helps us understand what we can be doing if we're missing out on something.
Can I?
I pretty much said it right there. I'd say that experience in, in planning is the foremost, most important thing that we could look for right now. With only having a handful of months on the planning board myself, I think it'd be important to have someone with experience to join us.
Anybody, select board, comments, thoughts?
I'll jump in, sure.
You don't have.
No, no, that's fine. So I want to thank all the applicants for putting their name in the hat and coming forward. Really enjoyed reading your resumes and your letters. It's, it's uncomfortable to have such a challenge before us. If it was like one obvious person and, or one candidate, you're sort of like, well, we, you know, kind of, the person is partly qualified, then we'll, we'll roll with that. But we have four really good candidates with very different experience. So I, I have, I'm leaning toward what Hazel had said in, in the sense of kind of that, that planning and broad experience. I think that I made some notes for some of the applicants to follow up of possibly some other boards and committees that they may want to join, where they could absolutely contribute if they so desired. But it seems to me that given the change in, in the makeup of the planning board, that, that planning and kind of big picture strategy experience and really to kind of complement the work that our town planner does and through the board is something that would be helpful. I, I also have some concerns, even though they've been recognized by, by the applicants about kind of conflicts, not that they themselves would create conflict, but that it, it could create some sort of, you know, awkwardness or procedure where, you know, people are having to recuse. And, and it does, for a board, that can be, you know, disruptive. It's not, you can get through it, but I have some concerns, so.
Okay, thank you. Other?
Yeah, I'll just say, yeah, again, thank you all very much. I mean, four eminently qualified candidates, you know, we can't make a wrong choice here this evening. Thank you very much. I also appreciate that, yes, we have all your phone numbers now and look forward to reaching out to you in the future. My, my general thought is that this is an opening on the planning board. And if the, the planning board has a clear candidate that they feel we should be supported, I would lean towards that candidate to be supportive of that board, generally so. But like I said, you know, we, we can't make a wrong pick this evening. So thank you all for coming here.
Thanks. Patrick?
Yeah, I would just echo. Thank you all for, for doing this. Four fantastic candidates. That's a good problem to have, even though it's a tough problem to have, but it's great that we have such strong candidates. You know, for me, one of the biggest things, some of the questioning was about it, was the master plan. There are over 200 projects identified on that master plan and that's a big, you know, it's a really important time in our town and the opportunities that that master plan lays in front of us that need to be looked at and managed through the implementation committee that stood up to, to run that. So I'm very eager to, as the liaison to the planning board, to work with the candidate once they're on. But that is, you know, one strong aspect is, is, is understanding how that master plan is going to affect the community and how we best roll that out. So I was, I was glad to hear some really good answers to, to those questions. Thank you.
Alan?
So, understanding that the planning board has two general areas of responsibilities. One is receiving applications, interpreting the zoning laws, site plans, special permit, the negotiation and mitigation, that sort of ongoing day-to-day management of projects and desired projects. The second part is actually particularly related to the master plan itself, is the creation and the editing and the altering of our zoning bylaws, which will implement in many ways the master plan and set the direction. And since serving on the master plan advisory committee, my big concern is how complex that implementation is going to be. And I look at the master plan, I, you know, even look at the climate action plan that the town's adopted, you know, where we want, we're, we're aligning ourselves with state goals to, for sustainability. And, you know, one example, we want more people driving electric cars, right? Well, people who rent apartments have no control whether or not their landlord puts in charging stations, right? If we want that to happen, we need to rethink zoning requirements for new developments or when developments have significant changes to help guide the owners into providing enough of the infrastructure that we need for our sustainability goals, right? I think that the complexity- I think that the complexity of writing zoning bylaws, having read most of our zoning bylaws and being involved in the master plan, the complexity there, to draft them in a way that you avoid the unintended consequence, that you are encouraging and setting the direction of what we want and where we want it in town, and then be able to present that in a way that someone who wants to come into town says, oh, they're looking for this type of development to revitalize the downtown, that's what I do. We want them to open the bylaws and say, okay, this is straightforward, I understand this. I know when I sit down with my architect and my designers and my engineers, what I'm going to need to do to put my concept together and go. And I know that that, just the complexities of zoning and looking at the tables and the footnotes and everything, that's a whole complex issue of itself. It's a long-winded way of saying, as my wife would say, you're being long-winded, that I lean towards candidates that have the experience with drafting the zoning bylaws and being involved in, you know, that process. There's no doubt in my mind that all four of the candidates could handle the ongoing day-to-day activity of the planning board as far as receiving applications, evaluating them, and guiding them through the permit process in a fair, prudent, and judicial manner. I think the town would benefit with more, you know, more experience and different experiences in the creation of zoning bylaws and the drafting, because I suspect our zoning bylaws over the next five to 10 years will drastically, in some aspects, different, not all, but some aspects different than they are today, in order for us to meet the goals of the master plan and the climate action plan.
Great. Thank you. I'll be real quick, because I think, I don't want to sound like one of the candidates has like a broken record here. But, you know, typically, and we're going to be doing appointments to boards and committees tonight, I love seeing new faces and new people stepping up to, you know, volunteer for positions. And we've heard different levels of new versus seasoned veterans too here tonight. I come back, though, to what was said, that, you know, this is filling a vacancy, and I think it's about, you know, having someone that can come into this, that can, I think, jump in right away and help out the board over the next seven months up to the next election when the full vacancy is available. So with that, I guess I lean towards of someone coming in with that experience on that side. I also, like Select Board Member Kio said, I'm going to look towards our folks on the planning board. You know better than we do on that. It is a joint appointment by state law, but really look to how you think best, because you know your jobs much better than we do. You live it day-to-day. So I'll listen to what you say, but I'm going to open for more debate for the things, but also would be open for a motion if there was one for a candidate to fill the role.
All right, I would like to move that the joint boards appoint John Gelsic to the planning board for the unexpired term, which will end in March 2023.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, is there any further debate or discussion? Okay. Seeing that, I guess I'll call for a vote here. So all those in favor, just raise their hand.
It's a roll call vote.
Oh, is it a roll call? Okay. Even that we're all here in favor?
Yes.
A person, I mean. Okay, roll call vote. So I'll start with the planning board. Sean?
John Pizzoni, yes.
Pete Bouchard, yes.
Hazel Nurse, yes.
Patrick Welch, yes.
Alan Edinburgh, yes.
Ian Johnson, yes.
Sean Kio, yes.
Shelby Marshall, yes.
So that's unanimous for John Gelsic. Thank you. John, I look forward to you working with the planning board. Justin, Greg, and Daniel, thank you guys very much for coming here this evening and appreciate your time. And I think echoing what I think everyone else said, this was, it's not easy, because we have four great candidates for this, but I'm confident that you'll all be participating, whether it's in our master plan implementation or continuing to work on your other roles that you have. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They have to adjourn.
Could I have a motion to adjourn the planning board until 7:15?
I second that.
Any question?
Nope.
All in favor?
Okay, so the planning board is adjourned, so the joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Board, with the planning board adjourning, is now adjourned, and we will convene our, the rest of our Select Board meeting. At this time, it was scheduled for 7:15, but we are now early at 6:52. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with the rest of the meeting.
And you.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the question came up is, do we have to wait till 7:15 to convene, or can we move forward with our?
You already called the meeting to order, and you didn't adjourn, so you're in.
Still in session. Okay. So chairman's prerogative here, there's no one in the audience who opened forum. What I will do tonight, if it's okay with the board, is that if folks come in for open forum by 7:15, I would entertain allowing them to speak, which is a little bit different than our normal rules, but just because we're going to be moving forward earlier.
And the only other thing I would just say is, if we get to the appointments early, we may need to pace ourselves, because there may be people that are planning to come as part of the appointment process that want to be present for that. So they're not required to be here, just.
Right, I think, Steelers, I understand that they're not, we didn't ask folks to be here for that, but they may be.
If I could just add that the alcohol compliance hearings, all those letters did state 7:40. So I would just FYI.
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
We're going to figure it out. We may be taking a break in here at some point, but let's, and Sean and others, help me out here, but I think, let's go.
A very thorough town manager's report.
Yeah. But let's jump in to the first one. I think we can hit is the animal control, so item three on our agenda, animal control officer, intermunicipal agreement, and I'll turn that over to you.
Yes. Bear with me, sorry, I'm bringing up the.
This is your first test, is.
I'm just opening up the packet. So as the board is aware, we currently have an agreement with the towns of Grafton and Shrewsbury, and the agreement expires at the end of the fiscal year. We are looking to renew it for another year. Both communities are interested in doing so. We provide animal control services and animal inspection backup for the town of Grafton. They pay, they pay us 38% of the costs, our wages, salaries, and expenses.
Just making sure.
And the agreement, the arrangement with Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury also has a full-time animal control officer, so Shrewsbury and Westboro provide backup, and there's no exchange, there's funds associated with that. Both, Shrewsbury's Select Board is meeting tonight, and they expect to approve continuing the agreement, and Grafton has expressed a strong desire to continue with the current arrangement.
Okay. So this is, this will be from basically July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023.
Correct.
I know in our notes, so we did have the discussion about potentially a more formal agreement being pursued, but at this time, we're just really looking to take the existing intermunicipal agreement and just extend it for one more year. Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay.
I guess my question right now goes to workload. Every quarter, we get a report from the animal control officer, and it seems, looking over the last couple of years, there's been a pretty significant increase in the number of calls and responses. And I'm wondering, you know, are we, if we continue this agreement, and I guess there's two aspects. You know, because Shrewsbury is a full-time ACO, it's more mutual aid, someone's out for a day and a call comes in, or, you know, there's an incident that requires two people, we respond, much like fire and police provide mutual aid. Whereas Grafton, we're providing, granted, they're paying their cost, but we're providing the service to them. And I guess I'd be, you know, if we do renew this agreement, at least be assured that we're going to look at workload to make sure that, you know, our animal control officer has days off.
Yes.
And isn't working, you know, because calls come in, when calls come in, it's, you know, event-driven and dispatch-driven, that we're not overloading our animal control officer because of the additional work also covering Grafton.
Right. And just as a reminder, the animal control officer is supervised by the police chief and the deputy chief has been, they are aware, they're looking at the data. I don't have anything, you know, hard to present, but my understanding is the, they don't believe that the current arrangement is overly burdensome in terms of what Grafton is paying us. It's very fair for the exchange of service.
And I guess I'm not questioning the 38% exchange of service. I'm thinking.
And from a workload standpoint, at this point.
So.
I think in our note too, it said that the chief, police chief Lori, was supportive of this for this year and is going to be working over the next fiscal year to see if there's any changes, that's, I think, to your points. And I think putting that on record and hearing that, we can make sure it gets back to the chief, that it is something that's a concern, and I echo that, because I think our animal control officer does a great job, but.
Yeah, there are other models, and that's what they're looking at. Are there potentially other models that we would want to consider, other ways to enter into the agreement? So that's something that we'll expect to discuss at a future date.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question. I guess I didn't see it in the contract currently. The way I read it is, our ACO supports Shrewsbury if Shrewsbury's ACO is out, and she also supports Grafton. In the event that Shrewsbury is out, she's now covering all three towns. Is that correct at one time? And if our ACO is out, Shrewsbury covers all three? Is that correct also? Just want to make sure, because just going to the workload piece of it, and kind of, so that's something I just want to be aware of is, but it sounds like it's working correctly.
Yes. That's how I read it in the agreement, that it is both. So we provide service to Shrewsbury on alternating weekends.
Yep.
And when the Shrewsbury ACO is on vacation or unavailable, then the Shrewsbury ACO will also provide backup services to Westboro and Grafton on alternating weekends, and when the Westboro ACO is on vacation or is otherwise unavailable.
Just a big territory, is all I was thinking.
It is, yeah.
In that event, that one is out, you know, it's a lot of square miles, so.
And my understanding, in the other communities, there are times, if there is an issue, their police departments may assist and help out as well, so.
Sure.
Anything else, or if not, identity and motion?
I would just, just bridging off of, and I appreciate Alan, your comments, because I had the same or similar. I would just be interested, as our police chief and deputy chief take a look at it to understand, I don't recall in our, in the current reporting from our ACO, and I believe that's more of a standard format, you know, kind of whatever typically would be given, if the Grafton statistics are reported. I believe we see Westboro's statistics, which is what I would expect to see, but it would be helpful to see, you know, when, when in such time that maybe something new is proposed, that we would have a lens into how much of the ACO's time is being spent in those other communities, not just Grafton.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll motion to, I'll make a motion to move to renew the IMA for our animal control and animal inspector services with the towns of Shrewsbury and Grafton for FY 2023 or through June 30th, 2023.
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. I'm going to skip four, five, and six for now. Let's move to item seven, the West Park Drive easements. I'll get back to you. Putting you on the spot by jumping all over the place.
You are.
Supposed to read my mind.
And our. Okay. So you have two easements for West Park Drive. These are easements that have previously been approved, and there's just been some back and forth to get them in final form. They were approved by town meeting. They have been reviewed both by council on both sides, both parties, as well as by staff to ensure that they reflect what we expect them to reflect. So the drainage and traffic signal easements, they're important to the town so that we have the ability to maintain these assets on private property. So both the engineering department, as well as the planning department, have reviewed them.
Great. So it's two easements, we'll take them as two separate motions, but any, before, ask for motion, any comments or questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, Kim. So in our packet, it was indicated that the town planner had been asked to review them as project lead, so that had, did happen in between?
Yes. The town planner and the town engineer have both weighed in since you received the packet.
Okay, thanks.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Just wish to put something on mute. Okay.
Okay. I move for the, to accept pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 83, Section 4, a drainage easement from Flanders 118 LLC on property located at 118 Flanders or 118 Flanders or Westboro.
Second.
Okay, anything further on this one? Not all those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Second one?
Sure. I move pursuant to the vote taken under Article 14 of the May 15, 2021 Annual Town Meeting to accept from Flanders 118 LLC a traffic signal easement.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded by Board Member Kio. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Great. Welcome, Chief. Actually, I'm going to call on you, if you don't mind. We were just, we've kind of been moving around, because we were early, and we just did vote on the intermunicipal agreement to extend that on the animal control officer. There was a question that just had come up about concerns around the amount of time and ensuring that our animal control officer, and you felt as, and the deputy chief felt as manager of her, that this still worked, that we weren't overworking, or based on this agreement.
Yeah, we still have concerns over that. We're in consultation with the town manager on, right now, we're collecting the data on how often she is in Grafton, and we'll be coming back if we have recommendations to, A, you know, terminate the agreement, or B, if we need to hire like a part-time person, and Grafton's would have to increase their allotment to the town of Westboro. You know, in my opinion, I mean, Grafton's getting a really good deal in this thing, so. But she's doing a great job, but yeah, there are concerns sometimes that she is putting in a lot of hours. She actually showed up once at a call in her, she, formal attire, she was at a wedding to help someone get a bat out of their house. She's probably one of the bravest human beings I've ever met, and she does a fantastic job, and we are concerned about that. But we're going to continue, we don't want to leave Grafton high and dry, we're going to do our homework on it and come back and make recommendations to you folks.
So we did approve it?
Yes.
Thank you for being here, and I'm glad to hear that.
Sorry, I didn't realize you were starting a little early. Yes.
Trying to be expeditious.
Yeah, it doesn't happen often.
I'm working on it.
And since I missed open forum, can I just say something real quick?
You absolutely can. Please, we haven't had open forum yet, so you've got it.
So I just, before the good lieutenant gets here, for the hearing we have tonight or the liquor violations, Lieutenant Chet Hallis, this is his last week. He's retiring next week after 34 years of illustrious service, so I was hoping maybe tonight you could just acknowledge him. He has been a phenomenal employee to this town. He has been a phenomenal employee to this town, and I can tell you, when Lieutenant McLeod was out, I went to him and I said, Lieutenant, I need you to work all three shifts. I need you to put your uniform on and plainclothes, and there wasn't one complaint. So during COVID, during very difficult times, he really was an added blessing to both the deputy chief and I, and it was just mean a lot to me. I'm not going to be here, I'm leaving on his last day, and we will do something for him eventually, but just if you could acknowledge him because he's been an absolute phenomenal employee for this town for thirty-four years. Grew up in this town, he's a great dad, you know, just a wonderful.
Good hockey coach, so.
Yeah, he gave back to Westboro as a hockey coach as well. I mean, he's just constantly, you know, puts the needs of others before his own, and he has very talented kids, never missed their college hockey games or college softball games. I mean, he would drive six, eight hours one-way, you know, and come be, be in the office in the morning. So he's just one of those really dedicated employees that I could tell you I'm going to miss, but his, his, it's a huge loss to us. I'm excited for, for Sergeant Luce to be promoted, and it's always nice to see, you know, things evolve in our department, but he is going to be someone that will be sorely missed.
Big shoes.
Big shoes. And his last day is Friday, or when is it?
July fifth.
July fifth?
Yeah, so next week.
Okay. I've written it down, but I asked my fellow board members if I somehow miss it to remind me that we do that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. But are they going to be here, or is it just?
Just Mr. Riley on Zoom.
Okay, is he the only one coming for that?
That was my understanding.
Okay.
He's, he's the attorney for them.
Yeah. So Mr. Riley, can you?
You'll have to stop the speakers on your laptop so I can unmute.
Okay.
Are we ahead, Ken? Should we take the wastewater?
Should be able to hear you now.
It's not a hearing.
Oh, it's not a hearing.
Okay, sorry.
Never mind.
Yeah, okay.
You should be on.
Okay. Mr. Riley, can you, can you hear us? Oops, I think you're on mute, looks like.
Sorry, yes, I do hear you.
Okay, perfect, and we hear you, so, thank you. So just, we've been jumping around because our meeting's gone quickly, but I appreciate you being here a little early. If it's, if I was asking, are you going to be the only one here in terms of representing the license holder?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Riley.
Perfect, so if it's okay with you, even though it's only ten past seven, we're going to move forward with your agenda item, does that work?
Absolutely, and I appreciate you having me on with this evening, I really do.
Okay, so with that, Kim, anything you want to kick off on this one, or?
So John Ed Motor Cars, Westboro LLC, doing business as Route Nine Nissan at two-seventy-three Turnpike Road, is requesting an amendment to their Class One dealer's license to add an auxiliary lot to store up to one hundred unregistered vehicles for sale at two-eighty-seven Turnpike Road. So the history here is they do currently have a license, but as the board is aware, we have had conversation with them because we were advised that they were parking vehicles in this auxiliary location, which was beyond the area covered by their license. The police have been out in April, advised them of the concern, the police report was in your, your packet. Since then, the town has been in communication with both Mr. Riley and his client to basically get to the point where we're at tonight. They believe they have a solution, but you have all the detail of the proposed plan in your document, in your, in your packet.
Perfect. Mr. Riley, anything that you want to introduce? I know there are some questions that we'll have here, but anything from your side?
No, you know, other than the fact, you know, we're, we're looking to expand by a hundred spaces. This will allow, you know, better customer service, better growth at the location. They've obviously spent some money since they took ownership of the property and remodeling it, and I do apologize for the fact that we're here probably a little later than we should have been, but it's one of those situations where sort of internally the left hand and the right hand weren't necessarily communicating that well, and we kind of, you know, the, the cars got there before the, the matter came before you, so I do apologize for that. But, you know, again, the, the budding property at two-eighty-seven Commerce City does have excess capacity at this point, given the fact that many employees of those businesses are working remotely, and so, you know, we are able to work out a situation with them where we can take advantage of their excess capacity. Obviously, no sales would be conducted on that location if you came in and you wanted to look at a car that was in, in stock at the dealership. Someone would go over there, physically retrieve it, bring it back to the dealership property, and you would, you know, take a peek at it there, test drive it, whatever you were going to do. So, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that you may have some questions, and I'll do my best to answer them for you.
Great, thanks. Alan, do you want to?
Sure. I'll start off, sir, but thank you for joining us here tonight, and I, I want to thank you for the apology as far as being out of compliance with your Class One license. From the information that was provided to us, my understanding is before September first of twenty-twenty-one, the dealership was storing cars at an overflow lot belonging to CarMax on Turnpike Road. And I just want to note for the record that it's also a violation of the Class One license. So it's disappointing that apparently since the dealership's opened, you've been out of compliance with the license. And so for me, the concern is how do we prevent that from happening in the future, because that is, it's unacceptable, it's unfair to other dealerships and other businesses that make the effort to make sure that they're following the bylaws and the rules. Do you know how much square footage in the building owned by Commerce City LLC is currently leased?
Do I know how much space is lo, is leased within Commerce City?
Yes, in the building.
Specifically, I do not. I'm not aware that there's an excessive amount of vacancy, rather, as I say, it's, it's a situation where many of the employees, what we're told, you know, are working remotely so that they, and that is a, we're told that that's a, a, I won't say absolutely permanent, but the, the expectation is, is that that is something that will, you know, be continuing for the foreseeable future. It is not something that's short-term, so I know that Ms. Foster had raised with me earlier this evening, you know, the question of, you know, the longevity of, of the agreement, the month-to-month sort of a situation, that the expectation is, as I say, that it would be long-term, and, and again, I think that, you know, part of the, part of the issue that you raised, you know, was, is that there was a lot going on at the site in terms of the, the construction and so forth, trying to sort of operate and, you know, remodel the dealership at the same time, and, you know, these things sort of sprung from that, and I, I can't do other than assure the board that, you know, that the, the situation has, this would correct the situation, and, you know, we would, we would certainly not allow this to, to be a repeat situation. I wouldn't look forward to coming back before the board having to, you know, address those kinds of questions, so.
Thank you. So the zoning and the permit for the building is based on four spaces per thousand of the space that's leased. And so my concern is that, if I counted correctly, there are one-hundred-and-seventy-eight parking spaces, including handicap access spaces. This lease is for a hundred of them, that's about fifty-six percent of the spaces. That would mean that no more than twenty-five thousand square feet of the building should be leased to remain in compliance with zoning and with the permit under which the building was built. And I'm, I'm also concerned in reading the agreement that it is month-to-month. The agreement has a no ca, you know, without cause termination by either party on sixty days' notice.
Correct.
I'd be more comfortable if this was a year-to-year agreement with that same sixty-day out clause, because technically, every time this agreement renews on a monthly basis, it triggers the permit again, right? In that, at the very least, we would need to be notified every month that there are no changes to the situation. And so I, I'm also concerned that, well, the landlord understands that the use of the space is less because people are working remotely or hybrid, that space is still leased, it's still a compliance issue. There's no mechanism in the agreement that clearly establishes the responsibility for who will notify the town when space is leased, and therefore the number of available spaces at four per thousand are available to the tenants of the building, which would also trigger a need to come in and amend the site under the, you know, the plan under the license. And so, you know, my, my feeling is that those items need to be addressed, and, you know, rather than saying no tonight, my thought is to give the parties involved a chance to deal with those issues. I would want to know that, you know, our building department, our planning board, you know, our town planner are comfortable with less than four spaces per thousand of leased space, because the way the bylaws are written, it's if the space is leased, even if they're sitting vacant, because no one's working in the office, and come back with a solution at a subsequent meeting, and that we would continue the matter until that could happen.
I, I would, I respect what you're saying. I would, I would say two things to you. Number one is that we do have other dealerships where we have similar arrangements, and they have generally turned out to be short-term arrangements, in that we have generally gone out, once we can kind of get an accurate gauge as to, you know, do you need a hundred vehicles, you know, on the site, do you need five hundred vehicles, you know, is your, what's your volume, you know? So they've gone out and they've actually been able to acquire properties for, you know, permanent, a, a permanent solution. The other thing I would say is, and, and I think that's something that's in play here as well, but the other thing I would say is certainly I would, I would, you know, not hesitate, I will, we'll contact the landlord, we'll get that information relative to the current occupancy and so forth, and we'll, you know, work with the town manager's office or whatever you think appropriate, you know, to, to brainstorm some solutions to your concerns, and, you know, be prepared for, for a, a future meeting. Sure.
I, I appreciate that, because my, my intent, I, I understand that off-site location of inventory is a challenge for dealerships, and there's certainly an advantage to have it within jogging distance of the dealership. When you go to retrieve a car that a customer might be interested in, it's, it's quicker, there's less driving on the road, it's safer, and so I, I would just like to see this worked so that it's a solution that, you know, fits within the bylaws and the permitting of the building, but also meets the needs of the dealership, so that it's, you know, a successful enterprise.
So I think, if I understand, Alan, yours was of continuing this, I guess the question I would just have is, we're kind of out of, they're out of compliance right now, would it be a, are we better to issue the permit tonight with conditions, or what?
Given that they're working toward a solution, I, I think there could be consideration to that and allowing the vehicles to remain there. The other, just another consideration in trying to figure out how to handle the lease arrangement in the agreement, I'm just a reminder, the licenses are annual and they're tied to calendar year, so maybe the, the first piece is to be comfortable that from now or your next meeting date to the end of the calendar year, that the conditions of the lease agreement satisfy, and then every time the license renews, there could be additional consideration, the documentation provided, you know, at that point, if there's a way to structure it so they're not having to come in potentially every month if there's a change. I mean, if the, you know, two-vehicle spaces, you know, three-vehicle spaces, they could be in here, you know, needing to change it just based on that. But you, you could, I think you could grant some consideration to the fact that they've gotten this far, they're working toward rectifying it, and.
Then really come back at our next meeting with, with those, if you're okay with that, I just, I'd rather get them in compliance now, yeah.
I think in the meantime, the, the concern is to make sure that the vehicles are not parked along the road and some of the areas where they were parked in the past that were of greater concern.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from the board? Okay.
I, well, I guess I'm, I'm just sort of generally interested, Kim, if you can tell me, this was first identified as a problem, we were made aware in April of this year?
I believe, I believe it was April.
Okay. It's the first time I, as a member of the board, to my knowledge, that we're kind of receiving this type of situation, maybe, maybe it happened before, I just don't recall. Is it, is there a reason why it, I'm not, is there a reason? In, in your opinion, experience on kind of the administrative side, is it reasonable that it took this long to get to us?
I think there was some discussion and some back and forth, and some of the materials are in the packet in terms of some communication between the town and in the dealership in terms of how to move forward, and so there was some time where some communication was back and forth, and.
And we feel like that's reasonable because all parties were working toward it this evening?
Yes. It probably could have, yes.
Okay. And I, and I guess the only question, Mr. Riley, I wasn't sure that I, maybe I misunderstood when you said that with some time, there might be a better understanding of how much off-site inventory is needed. The dealership has been active since September twenty-twenty-one. Admittedly, we're all in a pandemic, but how much more time would be needed to assess off-site needs, being that we're now in, you know, where we're at?
I think, I, I'm not sure as to when exactly the, the construction and so forth was finished, but, you know, generally speaking, it's about what, what, just from prior experience, I would tell you with, with these guys, it's about a year that they, you know, that they take the sort of gauge everything, and then that's kind of when, you know, as I was referring to earlier, in other places, they've, they've been able to go out and purchase locations so that, you know, they have a permanent solution and we don't have to kind of worry about these things, you know, as, as, you know, dealing with owners of other sites and all that brings with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If nothing else, not seeing it, Alan, do you want to try to attempt a motion here, or you want me to?
I would just move that we continue this until our next meeting to allow for resolution of issues related to zoning permit and.
Well, I guess when I come before, my question was, do we want to grant it now to put them in compliance?
I'm hesitant because I believe if we grant it right now, we immediately put the building in violation of zoning, which is four spaces per thousand of leased.
What, what I heard from Kim is that, being that, not unlike the time it took to get here, and there was an understanding that the process was working its way, that we've, I think, Alan, you've asked some great questions, and to me, we should get those answers and then revisit this on the nineteenth.
I guess the, the question I have, is there any concern then with them? My concern is right now, they have, they don't have a permit to store those cars. We ask them to remove those cars until that time? Or should we, are we continuing?
I, I would move that we, pending completion of this matter at our next meeting, we allow them to continue to store the vehicles in the back of the building, not in the spaces that face Route nine. So the twenty-three spaces along the Route nine frontage would be excluded. They ha, my understanding is they haven't been using those and haven't needed, that all the cars have been in the macros on the north end of the parking lot, where they're not particularly visible from the street, and they're also not the convenient spaces for people who might be working in the building.
I would second that.
So what is your concern with the twenty-three spaces facing Route nine?
So what is your concern with the 23 spaces facing Route 9? I'm just wondering why we would make them move 23 cars?
They haven't been using those spaces. And having unregistered cars that are stickered, because they're on a dealership lot, facing Route 9, makes that parking lot look like a car dealership, or part of the car dealership, rather than an additional storage lot. So I'd rather see them using the spaces, you know, away from Route 9, in the interim, until it happens.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my only concern there is if they have a need for it, we don't, I mean, I think what's more important, we don't want to see them park in the grass areas alongside of the road.
Right.
So I'd rather allow them to use those 23 spaces as necessary, because it's more important than putting them...
How many are on site right now?
What's that?
Do we know how many are on site right now?
Mr. Riley, do you know how many are on site right now?
I, I don't know a specific number. I do know, however, that they, you know, pending the results of, of this evening, you know, they, they were looking to ramp up capacity, you know, as quickly as they could. They have obviously held off because of the fact that this was pending, so... You know, it, would it hurt them to not have those 23 spaces? I do believe, yes. But, you know...
The affidavit in your packet...
It said, I think there were 29, if I remember correctly, is that right?
Twenty-nine. So one approach is to either go with that number, because that's the information you have in their packet, and to amend your motion, so that they can't increase the number over, between now and your next meeting, so that they can't increase the number over what is currently parked on the lot.
I mean, we, we can do that, and that makes sense. And I guess my motion provided them a little more latitude. It would get them, if I do my math right, 67 spaces. I know when this originally came to our attention, there was somewhere between 35 and 40 cars on the lot, all in the back. And so, I don't, you know, we don't know how many cars are on the lot today. So, I, I just don't want that parking lot looking like it's dealership, as opposed to having the cars stored in the back. So, that was my only concern with the 23 spaces facing Route 9.
But going forward, if we, if it works and we grant it, they...
Then it would be allowed, if we granted it to 100.
Once the zoning is figured out.
Yeah, once we make sure the use of the spaces isn't going to put...
Okay, so what your motion was, is it's excluding those 23, and that we come back, we continue this until our meeting on July 19, and work through the resolution?
Just to your point, though, given that it's not currently approved, you, you could exclude the 23, and indicate that no additional vehicles between now and your July meeting should be added to the lot.
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
I kind of lost that, so...
So, so the motion that's being discussed would be that, pending resolution of the matter at our next meeting, that the 23 spaces facing Route 9 may not be used, and the number of vehicles currently on the lot may not be increased? Is that what you're...
Yep.
Okay.
So, so the, the number that's currently there cannot be increased, is that what we're saying? But we don't, I can't define that number for you?
Okay, I...
I, I think...
Well, so maybe to be more specific here, right? We're saying on this affidavit that there's only 29 vehicles on that lot.
At the time that that affidavit was signed, correct?
So, perhaps what we, the motion should be, that we would allow the existing 29 vehicles that are part of this affidavit, and that any, no vehicle should be parked in those, those forward-facing Route 9 23 spaces, until this matter is resolved.
Well, I guess the concern is, that was from May, what if there's more on there today?
The police department can send, the police department is willing to send someone out there tomorrow to determine how many are on the lot at that point, and that's what they'll be held to. And I think it's fine, you don't need the exact number in your motion, you can just indicate they're held to whatever the count is tomorrow.
Current count is.
I guess I would be inclined to work back toward Alan's original motion. I'm not sure how I feel about the permanency of this anyway. You know, the, what, the, the request before us, to be honest with you, and then ultimately, having those 23 spaces, making that property look like a dealership. But that's for another day, because we're not there yet today. But I also, you know, this is a business that's just about a year into their business. I want them to thrive. It's nice to see that building in use, and not the condition it was in previously. So, I'm not sure that there's any harm at this time for allowing the use of the other spaces that are in blue, not the, when there are 23 facing Route 9, until this matter comes before us. I mean, the worst case is that we don't, you know, it, it doesn't pass muster with zoning and everything else, and then all the cars have to be moved. I mean, what, what's the harm at this point in letting them just...
Well, I guess I think of it as kind of similar to, you know, we don't, we don't make things out, more out of compliance than they already are.
Right.
Right? So that's, that's my only point, is lock it in to where it is now. It's an incentive to have the conversation and finish, you know, figure this out, and then move forward based on...
I guess I also don't want this to become something that we have to sort of administratively police. Like, so, as an example, if there are, let's say they're using all 12, 29, 7, and 7, I'm going based on the colors here, right? But in the 15, only six of the spots are being used. The police have far more important things to do than to be driving by counting cars. Right? So, why not just make it easy on them, and just say, just not allow the 23 in the front? And then we'll bring this up, you know, not even a month from now, and, you know, we'll have the answers. And this may not even be a viable solution to begin with. And I, I, I'm not happy that this is even before us. And to Alan's initial comments, I'm not going to repeat them. But at this point, it is what it is. And I don't want to put any more burden on our town staff for what is already kind of a ridiculous situation.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I guess, from my perspective, I wasn't thinking of it as being a burden on town staff, because I would think, in good faith of this, you know, working through this resolution, that the, that the business would adhere to whatever we, whatever we, our motion passes tonight in regards to the volume of vehicles on that lot, until such time that we resolve this. I wasn't expecting the police going out there on a daily, you know, basis, counting cars. So...
And I guess my only, a couple of comments. One, at this point, there's no doubt in my mind that the dealership's legal representative understands the seriousness of having been out of compliance for so long, and, and this being a matter before us. I have no doubt that will be conveyed with the utmost gravitas to the owner of the dealership, and in the negotiations, or whatever resolution comes to with the building owner. Yes, I, I don't want compliance to get worse than it is, but we're actively working towards a solution. I also understand that, as we're coming out of COVID, that dealership's part of an industry that's struggling with supply chain. And allocation of vehicles to dealerships is highly sensitive. I would, you know, as much as I want them to be in compliance, to have them, if they have a situation over the next month where they had to refuse cars from the manufacturer, that could impact their relationship with the manufacturer, and their allocations long-term, and hurt their business. They're out of compliance, they're going to come in compliance, we'll figure out a solution. I just don't want it looking like a car dealership lot with those 23 spaces. That gives them 67 spaces to work with, that may be...
Seventy-seven, right?
Yep.
Twenty-three, right, 77 spaces to work with. I don't know how many cars are on the lot today, we can certainly count tomorrow. You know, I just, I just don't want to inadvertently put the business in a bad situation. I want them to come into compliance, and, you know, and come to a fair resolution, which I think is going to be challenging enough as it is.
As I said earlier, I, I respect certainly what you're deliberating, but, you know, again, they've, they've, I don't think the, the numbers as they are, or might be tomorrow morning, are certainly representative of what would be needed or desired there. You know, it's, it's, you're talking about allowing the business to succeed. They have, you know, since this all started, and notice was initially given, they obviously have kept the numbers low. They are a volume dealership, they do have good supply. They're capable of getting supply, that's not one of their issues. So, certainly to say that we're limiting them to 29 for another month does hurt them. No question about that. Seventy-seven, you know, excluding those 23, I think that's a manageable situation. Where now, I would, you know, that, that's certainly workable. And we'll figure out something in the, in the meanwhile. I would hope that that's what we could do tonight.
Okay. I mean, I, I would lean towards that myself, and I think this is... The issue here, as I, as I think about it, it's, yes, it's a dealership's problem, but it's really not, because what you brought up is something with the owner of the property that they're leasing, that they need to realize, you know, I think it's been done in good faith by John Ed Westboro Motors LLC, to do what has been asked for them. I don't know that it's their responsibility to understand the zoning bylaws for that building, it's that building's owner, so it's the, it's the, I always get it wrong, the, the leaser, or lessor, whatever, whatever you want to call it. Lesser, yeah, I needed a lawyer to help me with that, so lesser. So I, I think, I think if we move to continue this, but allow for the storage of up to 77 unregistered vehicles, not allowing for the front 23 spaces to be used, but also condition on the following, the Conservation Commission Director's memorandum of 62222, that vehicles will only be parked on the pavement, and not on any grassy surfaces. And that the, and also the Community Development memorandum dated 628222, that vehicles are not parked on both sides of Indian Meadow Road. I think those are important ones to get in there immediately. So that's, because I made that motion, are folks...
Seconded.
Seconded. So it's really 77, allowing for 77, continue this meeting till our next meeting. We've talked about what we want the town to be doing, and, and working with the parties here to come back to us with, hopefully, a, something we can tighten up and, and vote in, in its entirety at that meeting.
I'll certainly work with the TM and the ATM to, to make sure that that happens.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So I know we need to have a vote here, but, so just, just to be clear, the parking of vehicles on, and I don't know this, is parking, is any parking allowed on Indian Meadow Road of any vehicle, or is that a no-parking area? Not for, I'm not talking about new cars, I'm talking about, like, employees, or anyone? It's allowed one side?
I haven't driven down it in a few years, I don't remember there being no parking signs on it. I don't have the chief.
Yeah, one, one side only, though. But the, the concern was, if cars are parked on both sides.
Okay, so what there is...
And, and those could not be unregistered vehicles.
Okay.
Because that would be parking an unregistered vehicle on the street.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, so, so parking is allowed on that street, one side only, just not unregistered vehicles? Thank you, okay, thanks.
Okay. So moved, seconded, any further comments? All those in favor? Okay, it's five to zero, five being present. Yeah. So I think we're set, so, thank you for working with the town manager. It's Assistant Town Manager moving this forward, we'll put it on our agenda for our next meeting. Hopefully, have this fully resolved, but for now, to allow for up to 77 cars, just excluding those that are on the front of the building fronting Route 9.
And that next meeting is July 19.
July 19 is our next meeting.
Very good, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You too. Yes, thank you. Okay. So we're back on schedule, we started early with some other things, and so when we, according to our agenda, we had open forums scheduled for 7:15, and we moved some things around, so I did want to, before we move forward here, to see if there was any items for open forum, anybody that's here for open forum? Okay, nothing there. I will take something in open forum, though, because I do see that we have Lieutenant Hallis here. And I would like to just offer our, our commendation to you on 34 years of service to the town, as you prepare to retire on July 5, so... Thank you, Lieutenant Hallis, you will be definitely missed, so thank you for all that you've done for Westboro, both in the police department, but also...
I'm not, I'm not sure if he looks happy with you right now, I hope you are parked legally.
July 6, they'll punch me.
Yeah, blame it on the chief, okay, not me. Yeah. Okay. So moving forward on our agenda, so our next item is alcohol compliance check offense hearings. Again, not something that we like to do here. But I guess I will ask Assistant Town Manager to introduce this.
Okay. On June 1, 2022, and June 7, 2022, the Westboro Police Department completed alcohol safety compliance checks of 31 businesses in Westboro, holding liquor licenses. This included package stores, which are also referred to as off-premise licenses, and restaurants, which are on-premise licenses. Of the 31 businesses, eight did not pass the compliance check. Included in the board's packet is a description of how the police department conducts these checks, the police reports of the evening's activities, and letters sent to each of the businesses who are found to be in violation, as well as a copy of the board's policy on liquor license suspension, and an email from town council. You may recall that High Point Wine and Spirits did have an offense within the last five years. However, since that offense happened, the business has changed hands. And town council has advised that the board treat this as a first offense for that reason, for that business. We also sent letters to the businesses that were affected, and they were also sent copies of the police reports and the select board policy. And each of those businesses was invited to attend tonight. And I believe you have representatives from all, all but one? Suckay Hana's not here.
Thank you for that. Looking at the chief, so lieutenants, anything from your side that you want to mention before we move into this?
If you have any specific questions, I'll defer to the detectives. All I'll say is, obviously, with COVID and different things, we didn't get out as much as we would like. So we usually do so many businesses stagger them every year, but because we felt we hadn't done it, any business that was open, we visited. And, you know, obviously, I support, you know, whatever decisions you make here tonight in regards to any sanctions against the businesses. But we really don't have a lot of problems with them. I'm hoping this is just an anomaly. I'd just like to let everyone know we're coming back. So, you know, we're going to do our jobs, and, and like I said, last thing we want to do is hurt our local businesses. We think we're very fair with this, and we will continue with these programs moving forward. But they're all respectable businesses, you know, in town. I, I think this is hopefully a one-off.
Great, thank you, chief. I think in the, I know you said this is done, one, to enforce, but also as an educational piece, so... Appreciate that, these are all first offenses, as was, was noted. We're going to take each entity individually here, and allow entities to speak. There's no requirement that you speak. Just to remind folks of our, our policy regarding violations on a first offense, the board has the ability to issue a warning, or a one-day suspension. Second offense would be a three-day suspension. Third offense, a five-day suspension. Fourth offense, a two-week suspension, and fifth... A fifth offense, suspension revocation, which we really don't like first offenses, but hopefully don't go beyond that either. So that's where we'll start. Any comments on the board before I kind of go in order of what we have on our agenda? Okay. So the first three are the package store off-premise licenses the Assistant Town Manager referred to. The first one was Cork and Grain at 2 West Main Street, which is an all-alcohol off-premise license. Again, very welcome to come up and speak to the board if you want to, but there's no requirement to do that either, and we will take a motion on each of these individually, as I stated. Okay.
Would you like a chair? Would you like a chair?
Yeah, I would like a chair. No, I'd like a motion if I could, please.
I move to issue a warning to Westbrook Cork and Grain located at 2 West Main Street for violation of their liquor license on June 7, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion or comments? I agree with the warning here and just note that, as you heard, we take this seriously. It is going to happen again. Thank you to our police department for doing what we've asked them to do, and as I say, when people come in front of us for licenses, we don't like to see... We like to see you here and welcome you to town. We don't like to see you back for violations and really hope that we don't see you again for a second violation. I don't want to say that to everybody, but you're all here, so you're hearing that from me, and it won't be a broken record and say it again. So all those in favor of issuing a warning to Westbrook Cork and Grain located at 2 West Main Street? That's five to zero, five being present. So thank you for that.
Ian, I'd also like to thank everyone for coming today.
Yes, appreciate it.
It speaks to how serious you take this, and it's important that you're part of the process.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, next was High Point Wine and Spirits at 2 Connector Road, Suite 10. Again, all-alcohol off-premise license. Don't know if there's comments, anything to be said from High Point Wine and Spirits? If you don't mind just introducing yourself, just so we have it on the record.
Yeah, my name is Manpreet. So I'm the owner, new owner, so just started the new business. So, yeah, so I hired Michael. He's a good guy, so I wanted to support him. So he did the tips training, and he's checking most of the time ID, so he missed one time. So I take full responsibility. I will not give you a next chance, so, yeah, just wanted to say. Yeah, I'll follow all the compliances.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion. I move to issue a warning to High Point Wine and Spirits located at 2 Connector Road for violation of their liquor license on June 1, 2022.
Second that.
You can pick which one you want, Seale. I think there was a tie. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present on the issuing of a warning. Okay, the next off-premise license, 711 at 2 South Street. This is a wine and malt license. Everybody's here from 711 who wants to speak? Again, not a requirement to. Okay, so you know, is there a motion?
I move to issue a warning to 711 located at 2 South Street for violation of their liquor license on June 1, 2022.
Second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Okay, the next five are on-premise licenses or restaurants. So the first one is Central House and Tavern at 44 South Street. This is an all-alcohol on-premise license.
Hi, guys, how's it going?
Good.
Dan Flood, for those of you that don't know me, nice to meet you. I'd like to make an excuse and tell you why it was unfair, but it was very fair, and we screwed up. Mistakes were made, and we'll certainly not be here again. We've been here for a long time. This is our first violation, so it's definitely something that we take seriously, and we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion. I move to issue a warning to Central House and Tavern located at 44 South Street for violation of their liquor license on June 7, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Okay, the next is Mayuri Indian Cuisine, 30 Lyman Street, again, an all-alcohol on-premise license. Evening.
Good evening. My name's David Burton-Azzi, and I represent PVR Group LLC, which is the owner of this business and the holder of the license. With me is Ramesha Jangareddy, who is the principal of that entity and also the manager on the license. He wants you to know first and foremost that he accepts full responsibility for this issue and this incident, and that he is committed to ensuring that it doesn't happen again. Just by way of explanation, certainly not excuse, he's been, you know, affected like many restaurants across the country and in Massachusetts with staffing issues after the COVID health emergency, and that night was no different. He was understaffed. It was super busy. The computers were down, the phones were ringing. He had a new employee who unfortunately made a bad mistake. He's already put some policies into place to ensure that this won't happen again. He already did training through ServeSafe. ServeSafe, both he and his wife are certified trainers. They trained all of their employees. Now they're going to have an additional requirement that they undergo further online training, and this would sort of reinforce the training that they get from Mr. Jangareddy and his wife, but it would also give them some additional training on food allergies and to other types of issues that are important in the restaurant industry. He's no longer going to be selling alcohol on a takeout basis. All alcohol will have to be consumed on the premises, and he's no longer going to allow new employees/trainees to serve alcohol in his business. So he's hopeful that you will understand that he is, again, fully responsible for this, and that he's really committed to making changes to ensure that it doesn't happen in the future, and he is hopeful that you'll never see him here again.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. I appreciate the work you're doing to ensure it doesn't happen. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move to issue a warning to Mayuri Indian Cuisine located at 30 Lyman Street for violation of their liquor license on June 1, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for the extra work they've put into this process.
Okay, next is Red Heat Restaurant, 227 Turnpike Road, again, an all-alcohol on-premise license.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Demakis. I'm an attorney with offices on Lynn. To my left is Bill Nebus. He's chief of administration of Burton's Grill LLC, which is the parent company of Red Heat Grill of Westboro. And to his left is Susan Jimenez, who's the manager at the store. And I can't tell you how sorry we ought to be here and how seriously we take this. I've been corporate counsel for this particular chain of restaurants, there's 11 Burton's Grills and Red Heat Grills in Massachusetts and 11 others outside of Massachusetts, and they've been in operation for 18 years, and this is the second violation of sale to a minor throughout the entire chain in 18 years. When I say this is an anomaly, this is an anomaly. They have a... They had a policy where anybody who looks 35 years younger, they card. And obviously, the person that was involved in this thing did not look like he was 35 years old. And unfortunately, there's a zero tolerance, and unfortunately, the bartender was terminated. Susan has been in this industry for 12 years. She's been with Red Heat Grill for four years. She's worked with Outback for eight, in various Outback restaurants for eight years before that. She's very experienced. They're having a store-wide tip certification. We have all the tip certificates of all the employees, but they're doing a retip certification class for everybody at 9:00 AM on July 16, and they're carding everybody right now. And we're sorry that we're here. It won't happen again. They're a great corporate citizen. They've had very good success throughout their history, and Confucius was right, stuff happens. I mean, there's no other explanation, and they can answer any questions you want, but this is a wonderful, wonderful chain, wonderful manager, and a good... They're very concerned.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or...? None?
I'm going to need spelling of people's names if I can just ask the chair...
Yes, perfect. If you don't mind just writing down names, just so we have it for the record, too. After that. Yeah.
I would just say in general that I think it's better to go through this, what is a painful process for all bodies, but a necessary one, because, God forbid, someone was served and something happened that impacted lives. So it is better to have this painful process than something that could be much, much worse.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I think it's what we said, yeah, it's... We do it to enforce it, but it's also an educational thing by our police department, by us, and I agree wholeheartedly, Shelby.
I move to issue a warning to Red Heat Tavern located at 227 Turnpike Road for violation of their liquor license on June 7, 2022.
Second that.
All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, Sakihana Cuisine, 21 South Street.
They are not here.
Wine and malt, and they are not here. I don't believe... They're out. They were on vacation and closed prior to even getting our letter, so... Do we have a motion on this one?
I move to issue a warning to Sakihana Cuisine located at 21 South Street for violation of their liquor license on June 1, 2022.
Second that.
Okay, all those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. The final one, the Westbrook Korean Restaurant, 7 East Main Street, got an on-premise license for wine and malt. Good evening, thanks for being here.
I'm sorry, I don't speak English, and my sister helped me.
That's okay. That's okay.
Thank you.
You can bend the microphone. There you go.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Akizavas. You know, I just I helping to my sister that days, and she's going to pick up to this pharmacy, the medicine. Just a one minute, and I just, my mistake, I'm sorry. My bad, I just give it to this and a beer. I just turn around to the woman, I said, one minute, I need to go answer the phone. I come back for you. He just left. I said, oh my God, oh my God, what's going on? And 30 seconds later, and the cops coming. I said, I'm sorry, that's my bad. Nothing I can do right now, you know? Just told him. He said, that's okay, I said, just give me the license, and say, you know, oh, you know, owner's coming. She's not there. She going to the pharmacy. That's why I cannot call to her. Sorry.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Be happy to make a motion. I move to issue a warning to Westbrook Korean Restaurant located at 7 East Main Street for violation of their liquor license on June 1, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. If you could help, just, do you need names?
Actually, I know Young and Key, so...
Okay, perfect. So you have the names.
Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
So what we do?
You're all done? We just issued a warning? Yeah, so everything is good.
Don't come back and visit us.
I don't want to see you here. Okay.
See you at the restaurant.
See you at the restaurant.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Okay. Next on our agenda, are we slightly early? I think there might be other people coming for the appointments, you said?
I don't know. I know some are planning on coming, so I'm wondering if we could take number eight?
Yeah, we'll take eight, just to put that back to eight, 20. So number eight on our agenda is the wastewater treatment plant intermunicipal agreement amendment. And back to Kim, the Assistant Town Manager.
Sure. So this request is consistent with the vote taken under Article 24 at the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. That's when the town voted to authorize the select board to enter, to amend the agreement, the existing intermunicipal agreement that the towns of Shrewsbury and Westboro entered into.
Hey, Patrick, we have to leave that open?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
That we entered into in 1979 entitled Agreement for the Construction and Operation of the Westboro Treatment Plant. And that vote authorized revision of Article 12 of the agreement. And so what you have before you tonight, while it was approved at town meeting, you actually have a document before you tonight that you need to execute, you need to vote to approve the amendment and execute the agreement as presented.
Great, thank you for that. And that was the motion that was made, as you said, at the town meeting.
So that alone is not sufficient for the amendment to happen? It requires your action tonight?
It voted to authorize us as the select board to enter into the amendment and the intermunicipal agreement, so that's what we're doing this evening, based on the vote at town meeting.
And the only change is this, what we're seeing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's that strike through and addition of what was underlined. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move pursuant to Article 24 of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting to approve the Amendment Number Six to the Agreement for the Construction and Operation of the Westboro Treatment Plant as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Why don't we move forward with Item Nine, a request to amend the composition of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee? Kim, I'll send it back to you on this one, too.
Okay. So as the board is aware, Diversity and Inclusion Committee was established in 2016 by the Select Board. Membership is actually appointed by the town manager, but as the Select Board created the committee at that point, they identified it as an 11-member committee. Tonight, we're seeking your approval to amend the current number of members from 11 down to seven, and then to also establish that members will have three-year terms consistent with the recommendations of our recently, the committee handbook that we adopted in November. So the information in your packet addresses both the size of the committee, as well as establishing staggered three-year terms. If you do approve the reduction in membership to seven members, the proposal is to have for this July, starting this July, to set that up with two of those being three-year terms, three reappointments, or three appointments for two-year terms, and two appointments reflecting a one-year term, and then that will get it on the cycle. Should the board agree to this new composition, a solicitation for letters of interest from new applicants and current members seeking reappointment will be advertised with the deadline of July 17, and similar to the process that the board has followed, the town manager will make the appointments, but using the similar process.
And this is in front of us, really, to, as you said, to change the composition as recommended, down to seven members, and then the staggered terms as per our handbook?
Both Shelby and I have been members of the committee, and so the committee actually did have discussion about this. A couple of things, there are, in terms of the reduction, right now, the committee has members who are staff as well as residents, and there are several staff who are stepping down, as well as, I don't want to speak for you, Shelby, but you indicated that you would be stepping off the committee. So I just wanted to... The number of... We're not, by reducing the membership, we're not reducing the resident participation. And part of the discussion, too, was to continue to involve staff and other folks. Well, they won't have formal seats on, appointed seats on the committee. They will still participate as needed and be able to assist the committee as different topics are explored or discussed.
Shelby, anything?
So a couple of other things that I would add, that the composition per, when the Diversity and Inclusion Committee was originally established, there was no requirement that a select board member be on it, so how those seats were, or who held those seats was not defined. It just sort of, I think, came to be because of the board at that time, so... just sort of, I think, came to be because of the board at that time, so hence why we don't need to make that change. There are a couple members of our staff that have indicated an interest in remaining on the committee, so there is certainly still that involvement, and Kim will be supporting that committee as well. So, I think one of the actions of our board at some point should be to determine the liaison relationship, because I do think that that's important, and, you know, we should have that discussion as a board at some point. But I, I think that it's a, I'm very supportive of the change, the composition of the terms and the reduction. We've had a really difficult time with quorums with an eleven-member board, and so you sort of, wanna have sort of like this all-inclusive, large approach to things, and eleven can be tough, I know for those of you that have worked on that size. So I think this is a good kind of restart, if you will, that committee.
Perfect. And Kim and Cee, if you can just mark that to her request to put the liaison piece on a future agenda, that'd be great.
So, one other question, so we would then vote on members at our next meeting.
Their town manager appointments.
Town manager appointments.
So, at our last meeting, the members generally sort of identified what, the current members identified their interest in staying on and the term, the year terms that they'd be willing to serve, but to Kim's point, we'll do a resolicitation of the community and allow that to stay open through July 17th, so that at our meeting on the 19th, I would presume Christie would present her recommendations to us, and it's a concurrence, right?
No.
Nope, nope, it's no concurrence, it's just telling us.
But she's just gonna follow the same process that we've kind of followed, what we're gonna be doing tonight, that you did at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Sure, I can make the motion. Before, well, can I just make one more comment? I, I think that, I think removing a select board member from that committee is actually a good thing, because I think we've sort of seen from experience matters come before the board, not that we don't have this with other committees, but, you know, it sort of gives the select board two shots at weighing in as opposed to being a liaison, so I think that would be a much more effective role for this board as it relates back to that particular committee, so, anyway. But I move to amend the Composition Diversity and Inclusion Committee to seven members with three staggered terms that will begin on July 1, 2022 as follows. Two members at three-year terms, three members at two-year terms, two members at one-year term.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded, all those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Okay, we're still, Tom Andrew, or ten minutes ahead? Yeah, any interdepartmental transfers?
No.
No interdepartmental transfers?
We pass over that as well as Number 11.
And no, so Number 11 was request for exemption from plastic bag bylaw requirements as amended, and there's been no additional applications for exemption.
I think we're close enough, Ian, I mean, it's eight-ten, so, you know, I think we're.
Okay, or we could do Tom Andrews' report and then go.
Sure.
Why don't we do that, let's go to Tom Andrews' report, get us closer, and then we'll move back to that one.
Alright, so on behalf of the town manager, I will share her report. So a few updates related to some exciting things going on. Regal Cinema, we did have a walkthrough two weeks ago. We have had thirty-seven entities request copies of the RFP, so we are hopeful that that will, we know we won't get all of those back in terms of actual submissions, but as, as we approach the deadline in July, we're hopeful that we'll have a good response. I'm also very pleased to announce that the Westboro Finance Team has been awarded the Government Finance Officer Association Distinguished Budget Award for our FY23 budget document. This is the third year that we have followed the GFOA criteria, and the third year that we've won the award. This ongoing commitment to these best practices by departments and the work they do to create this document has served to establish the budget is a resource for the community, not only for budget figures, but also policy, financial planning, operations, and communication.
Congratulations on that, too.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you to, it's a, it's a team effort, the departments all work very collaboratively and put a lot of effort into it, so I will pass that on. A couple of updates, one of note regarding payments to our collector's office, the collector's office is changing lockbox companies. Some people may not really pay close attention to this, but when you send in some of your real estate, personal property, water, sewer bills, excise bills, well, the top line of the address may say Town of Westboro, they're going to a lockbox in another community. We are changing to a lockbox that will be in Woburn, and I did think about that before I pronounced it, because I'm not a Massachusetts native.
You said it right.
But I got it right, okay. So just for folks to be aware that as of July 1st, particularly if you have automatic payments set up through your bank, you will need to go in and change it so it goes to the correct address. And I know that's been posted in other places, and certainly any bills that are issued, it's really been highlighted.
Before Shelby asks us, is this front and center on the website?
I.
Can we put it there?
We, if it is not, we will get it there.
Yeah.
I know it's, I know it's wherever the, the information from the collector's office where people would go looking for bill information, but we can certainly get it there.
People wanna pay attention, because it can affect your ability to get a permit and other things, so it's, it's really important you make that change, yeah.
Pardon, well, if people aren't aware, and they get, they would get their checks returned to them, correct?
Hopefully, yes.
Like, I guess we're giving people a little leeway with this.
I don't know the specifics of that, but I do know when they make a change, they do try to time it so that there is ample time to, to provide that notification and to make sure, we will get the money, the checks will go back and, yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's guaranteed some people are gonna make a mistake.
Absolutely.
Yep. But I think on the bills, too, the new addresses on the new bills, the real estate bills that just came out for eight, one payment.
Yeah, it's particularly the internet, the internet kind of online banking, it's really where you, you know, because it's just automatic, I should go and change it.
And those will bounce quickly, more quickly than a paper check. Okay, just some positive news on the grants front. We've received several grant awards this past month, the Council on Aging received its Formula Grant, this is an annual grant, it's $38,000 and change. The DPW has received two grants for snow removal and sidewalk safety from the Department of Transportation in the amounts of $32,000 and change and just over $30,000. The IT Department also received a Community Compact grant for fiber optic work in the amount of $7,500. On the library front.
Summer reading program.
Teen librarian Jen McGrath held an event for fifth graders called Welcome to the Teen Zone. The Teen Zone serves students in grades six to twelve, so they will be eligible to participate in teen events starting this summer, so it was a nice welcome to those forty-two students who attended. Summer reading programs are also kicking off, Read Across Westboro runs from June 22nd to August 24th. Participants who read or listen to books and keep track of the days and times, the amount of time they've read, are eligible to win some fantastic prizes. Additional information on how to track and register for that is available on the library's website. Again, some really good positive news, the Westboro Golf Club was ranked tenth on the Annual Golfer's Choice List of Best Golf Courses in Massachusetts. The golf course continues to thrive since March 1st, there have been over 12,000 rounds of golf played. Ian, how many of those have been you?
Not enough.
And this is both member play and public play. Finally, updates from Youth and Family Services, recognition of May as Mental Health Awareness Month was a great success. A major highlight for the department was that twenty-eight individuals completed an anonymous online mental health screening tool. That remains available and on the department's website. Additionally, referrals for direct services have been studied, and the clinical staff all have full caseloads. Reach Out Westboro, an emotional resiliency training program organized with Westboro Connects and funded through Metro West Health Foundation, will host its final trainings in June, I believe they have hosted them. Lastly, that grant, Reach Out Westboro grant, has been extended through September, so they will launch a series of multilingual short training videos focusing on emotional resiliency. I'm sure you can find additional information, as those are scheduled on the Youth and Family Services website.
Great, thank you for that. Just to add, just back to the golf club, it's, I mean, it's a big deal to get ranked, and just kudos to the staff over there, Matt, as well as the superintendent of the golf course, if you go buy it, even with the conditions we've had, just looks phenomenal for the number of, of rounds that have been played on it, so it's just a really testament to that.
Not helping your score, though, I hear.
It is not. My handicap is staying steady, steadily bad. Great, okay, so we are just about at eight-twenty, so I'm gonna move us back to Item Six, which is appointments for the following board's committees. There's five of them tonight, Active Transportation Safety, Waste Management, Exploratory, Economic Development, Conservation Commission, and Sustainable Westboro. So again, this was, we've received letters of interest from all of these, and I'm just gonna read the summary here, and this is really based on the board committee handbooks regards to reappointments, that reappointments are not guaranteed, nor do they determine solely by the committee members' interests and continue to serve on the committee. If applicable, at least nine days prior to the end of a committee member's term, the appointing authority shall publish the seats coming up for reappointment. Individuals express interest in a position, the appointing authority may consider whether to reappoint the current member, appoint a new member. The appointing authority should consider balancing the makeup of the committee to ensure continuity with opportunities for residents interested in participating, and the appointing authority at its sole discretion may decide not to reappoint, even if doing so leaves a vacancy. And at the June 14th meeting of this board, the decision was made to sitting members submit letters of interest for reappointment to be evaluated with new applications on those committees that I read from the agenda. We had also approved the new mission terms and term structures for the Active Transportation Safety Committee at that time. So, I think probably the easiest thing is to kind of go through how we go through these one by one. We can either go by, probably the agenda's the easiest way, although it doesn't flow with our packets.
I know.
But, okay, so we have Active Transportation and Safety Committee, I think as was voted on last time, there's one member that will be, could be appointed for a three-year term, two members for two-year terms, two members for one-year term, again, spacing it out like we just talked about with diversity and inclusion, so it's five members. I think at this point, we received requests for reappointment from three members and a new applicant also, so four members out of five committee openings we've received.
Motion?
Love a motion.
I move we appoint Julie Squires to the Active Transportation Safety Committee for a term of one year, that we appoint Andy Konigsberg to the Active Transportation Safety Committee for a term of two years, and Ellen Google to the Active Transportation Safety Committee for a term of three years.
And just to, to note here, we did have an application from Don Byrne for reappointment. I did not hear.
That's not part of my motion.
Motion that. So we have three on a motion that was made here, is there a second of that motion?
I will second the motion.
Okay. We will vote on that motion for Active Transportation Safety Committee, as that was brought up. So, all those in favor?
Can we have some discussion?
We can have some discussion, my plan is we have a motion, we can have discussion on it, my plan would be to make a secondary motion after this, but we can have discussion.
Okay.
You can do it one of two ways, if you want to discuss now, I think that.
Well.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I think that, I don't know, I, I let's, let's continue with the motion, that, that's fine, because I don't wanna read where you're going, but we can, if we get a further discussion, then, then I'm agreeable to move forward.
On those three?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions on those three? And just, just to note, my intent is to make a motion to appoint Don Byrne to a term, and we can, don't have to discuss that now, we can discuss that after.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of Select Board Member Edinburgh's motion that was seconded by?
Sean.
Member Keo, yes. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. And just remind me that, again, the terms that you, that we appointed there, one year for Julie Squires, Andy and Ellen were for?
Two and three.
Two and three.
Two, respectively, yep.
Okay.
Sorry, Ellen was two, or?
I have three.
Ellen was three.
Andy was two.
Andy's two.
So I would, I would like to make a motion to appoint Don Byrne to the Active Safety and Transportation Committee for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there discussion, comments?
There is, so, there's a particular, there are reasons why I did not, in my motion, move for his reappointment, and that, well, he's been active in the committee and has played a key role in the committee, and particularly around the Beewalk Trail. There are ongoing issues with his involvement and his representation, representation of the project, his communications with the state about the project. As recently as in the last couple of weeks, he's been on social media, misrepresenting the project and the position of the town and the work of town staff and select board. As, as much as I'm disappointed to say it, I, I feel his continued membership in the committee is actually harmful. I'll remind this committee that when we accepted the feasibility study, that we had expected to receive that almost six months before we did. The Active Transportation Safety Committee was asked to address five or six very specific concerns that were shared by the Conservation Committee. Mr. Byrne took it upon himself to rewrite major portions of the document. That wasn't what was asked or what was expected, it was based on his personal beliefs on how the project should move forward. It delayed us receiving it and being able to act on the plan, and in hindsight, we should have pushed earlier, you know, harder to get it back sooner, because the reality is we missed an entire year of funding opportunity and grants. And we may have missed our opportunity for state-level ARPA funds to be used for the trail, which other communities are now pursuing, and that's in the process. And so, I'm determined about that, it was so difficult at one point that he refused to provide the town with electronic copies of the document, even though his work on the committee is for the town. I can show email trains where he actually threatened the town with legal action for copyright violation for some of the content that he chose to place in the document. He's had a contentious relationship with Conservation Commission that's been very public and very detrimental to the project in the public's mind over a number of years. My hope is that with Andy Konigsberg, who's on the Conservation Commission joining this, that the two committees, as they advise the town on the, you know, the moving forward of the trail, where conservation issues, we know they're conservation issues, and there're gonna be some very challenging ones, that we'll have a cooperative work environment that'll let the project move forward more quickly than it's going, and be more accessible to state grants. And so, you know, it's, it's a difficult, I think it's a personally difficult position to take. I've personally had many, many conversations with Mr. Byrne about his communications, his, about his working relationship with town staff, which is also key to the success of the project, and I, I think the town and the committee and the projects would be. And I, I think the town and the committee and the projects would be best served if we held that seat open and recruited some new individuals. Knowing the number of appointees we have, there's no concern about quorum here because the full ATSC also has town staff members. So this should not impact them to be able to continue to do their work and have a quorum.
Thanks. Any other comments? I mean, thanks for that, Alan. I may be the motion. I've had not similar situations and not denying that, that those where they are, I've had many comments from folks encouraging their support for, for Don to be reappointed to this, including his letter to us as a board. You know, I think that, to your comments, I know that you've done a lot of work there. I think there's maybe supervision and work to be done, you know, by us. But I think what Don brings to this, the wealth of knowledge, the relationships, I know that he's been asked to and has volunteered to work on Northborough's plan as we speak, as a volunteer, which he is willing to do for them and others. And I think losing him on this committee would be, would be detrimental to us. And I, again, not denying some of the things you had, but I think that what he brings is, is important in what we're trying to do from an overall purpose, not just B-Walt, but other things on the committee. So that's where my motion came from and not.
No, no, I, I appreciate that sentiment, and I understand that there are many in town, and I do appreciate the work he's done historically and even on the work, when we, when we look at his connections and his expertise, however, it's also the number of times that there have had to be conversations to manage this is, it puts an unfair burden on other members of the committee and the committee chair. It puts an unfair burden on town staff. I've learned that his relationships with many state agencies and key people in the states are not good, that those have soured. And that town staff have had to respond when he's spoken to people at the state level, dealing, you know, claiming issues or problems or speaking against the project and the way it's proceeding. And it's, in my view, unfortunately, it's become more of a hindrance than a help. And, and so how many times do we say, okay, we're going to sit down and talk and work this out and one more chance? He served on the committee for a long time. Its service is appreciated. I think it's important. I also, particularly around the feasibility study, when he, when he, when we accepted the feasibility study, he said he rewrote major portions because the state tip for the entire project all at once was, in his words, "the best and only way to fund this. It's the only way it's going to work." Our first meeting, the first meeting that was held with Mass DOT and I believe CMRPC was there, was that was, that was not correct. That that's not the way the project would get funded. It would get funded in phases by different funding sources, whether it's Mass Trails or Mass DOT, Mass Econ potentially, this was done in Hudson, and there would be a variety of things. When we held our stakeholders meeting for the Otis Street Corridor, even though Mass DOT was in, was involved in the plan and the study and the proposed creation of a physically separate fourteen-foot-wide easement and twelve-foot-wide multi-use trail along the full length, you know, the appropriate length of Otis Street, in a meeting intended to educate landowners and get them on board, some of whom, to make that plan happen, will be spending money to relocate driveways and invest in infrastructure. He's a member of the committee that's supposed to be promoting the trail. He stood up and spoke against it. And spoke against the study and the plan. And there was damage control that had to be done. And as much as I hate to say it, you know, to, to do that and put millions of dollars in mass works grants and private investment to fix the dangerous, what, the second most dangerous intersection in the state of Route nine and Otis Street, to get the sidewalk crossing for our residents that arrive, and to have the portion of the trail along Otis Street that could connect to the train station and connect to the trail going all the way east. It, it, it shows, in my mind, it shows a lack of judgment. I'm not sure we can trust the advice. Advice he's given on easements has turned out to be incorrect. I mean, I mean, he has a lot of expertise, but there's been this sense that it's absolute, and it's not. And I think getting other people, recruiting people with expertise, people with an interest in it, would be very valuable. You know, ATSC does a lot of work beyond the B-Walt Trail, and I do want to mention, I apologize for in previous session overlooking all the hard work that was done, particularly around some fabulous work with the Safe Routes to School program and other initiatives. There have been requests into that committee to look at on-road bike lanes and cycling and things. I think a broader view of the role of the committee, a broader view of Active Transportation. Our LRRP grants for downtown revitalization have bicycle and Active Transportation components. We need committee members who can work cooperatively with the EDC and with business owners. And that's, unfortunately, that hasn't been the process, and I, I feel awful having to do this in public session. He has served the community well over the years. It has not been effective in the last several years. And I, I think it will benefit the committee and the town and the initiatives we have if we hold that seat open and bring in additional voices.
Any other comments, questions?
So, yes, so as a liaison to the Active Transportation Safety Committee, I can both support many of the things, Ellen, you've said. And so I, I appreciate the thoughtfulness in the way you deliver them because it's very difficult to do. So, and I know you don't, you know, take pleasure in doing that. It's for anyone that's ever sat before a microphone and been on camera, extremely difficult. So I thank you for your honesty and the thoroughness of your response. Equally, I can, you know, I concur with Ian's comment, and that's why I seconded the motion. I believe that there's been a lot of really good work, and I have seen a transition, if you will, or a changing of the tide at recent ATSC meetings where, now that we've got the feasibility study done and we're, you know, we've had that meeting you mentioned with CMRCP, and we've got some direction specifically on the B-Walt Trail, that there's a in, in the work group that I'm also part of with Christie and Fred and others, and Don is part of that, there is a collaborative sense of all that. So that's very heavily weighing on, you know, focusing on the now as opposed to where we've been. And I think we're coming to a really important phase of, of, you know, sort of those next steps on B-Walt, whether they be around easements or as well as seeking grant funding for design. And I think that Mr. Byrne's input would be, in my opinion, is welcome and important. So that's why I, I think that it's important that he continue on. Without question, any committee member, no matter who it is, has to be a collaborative member, right? We can agree to disagree, but ultimately, when a committee makes a decision, then, you know, the committee or the board moves forward, whether it's a three-two or a four-one or, you know, whatever it is. And, and we have to accept that and do so as a member of that team. And so it's important for any committee member to understand that, that they're not a one-man band, so to speak. So I will, I guess I'll leave it at that for, I don't want to be redundant to any comments that were already made, but I want to thank both of you for, for, you know, what you've added here.
Okay, anything, any other comments?
I guess I'm glad to hear that there's some change of heart. But it goes back to meetings earlier this spring where there were discussions that the ex parte communications with state officials, the disparaging of town staff, some of the other communications had to stop. And shortly thereafter, when we walked into the stakeholders meeting for the Otis Street Corridor, Mr. Byrne informed me that he had taken the initiative to contact Mass DOT prior to the meeting to show them the corridor study and tell them why it was bad and why it wouldn't work. And I think at this point, it's, for me, it's a trust issue. And yes, if, if things are improving or things are fine now, that's great. They've been fine in the past, and then they're not. And it's this endless cycle that uses time and energy and stress and angst for a lot of people. And it, it slows the process down, and it slows the project down. I think that's all.
Sean?
Yeah, oh, thank, thank you both for your comments. It, it's tough. I, I think you look at these and, and of course, you know, Mr. Byrne has been involved with this project from its infancy, right? From before it was a committee, you know, I'd say the formation of the B-Walt was, was thanks to him and it evolving into the Active Safety and Transportation Committee. I think, you know, unfortunately, I, I think we have to do what's best for the town here and, and not as what's best for the individual. And, you know, I, I agree for this project to move forward as, as quickly and as, as it can. I, I agree with Alan. And, you know, so I, I just want to make that comment, and that's how I'm going to vote on this.
Other comments?
So I'll just state that having, you know, being a relatively new member on the board, only a year and a half in here, I have not had a lot of experience with Mr. Burns, other than a few observations in various different meetings and, and whatnot. And so I didn't have a lot of this history that was discussed tonight, although I had my own suspicions in regards to some of, perhaps then, I'll call it, for lack of a better word, non-team player aspect of, of how he has worked with not only the ATC, Advanced Advisory Transportation Committee, but also with other boards, it sounds like. I was coming into this thinking, you know, perhaps there's an opportunity here, put him on for one more year, see if things improve, see if things will, will get any better. But it sounds like that, that's already, that ship's already sailed. It's, it's something that he's, he's had discussions with and been talked to and, and given some guidance. And it doesn't seem like it's necessarily been as effective as it truly needs to be. So at this point, I'm, I'm not willing to vote for Mr. Burns either. And I, and I'll chalk it also up to, I think that there's a need for, I think, new blood on, on the committee, it sounds like. You know, to get new thinking, new ideas. Unfortunately, if, if the vote holds up like we're discussing right now, it would only make it a three-person committee out of five. And I would love to see more participation.
No, there are town staff, there are town members on the committee. So to Alan's point, it does not, it's not, it's not a committee of five.
Right, okay.
It's five, it's five resident members, so we have three residents.
Correct.
And, and let me just add, I mean, it, they're open meetings. I would still expect Mr. Byrne to attend and provide his opinions on everything. I think it's just more that, you know, his inability to represent himself as the committee, you know, I think is, is important here. But certainly I expect his input will still be included, just not as a voting member.
I guess I would just, you know, again, to the point of conversation and, and working as a board, I appreciate everyone's comments here. I would say that by removing him from the committee, we take, with, there will be a significant loss of resident, knowledgeable resident input, not to take away from any of the other residents. So you have town staff that understand their lanes and their work. And I think you see from Mr. Byrne, Mr. Burns's letter, that his training, that he stays current with, his participation, you know, at, at various conferences in the state level. He's asked to speak at various events based on his credentials. To remove that to the committee, from the committee, I think is, does more harm than it does good. I would like the board to consider the comments that have been made here, obviously very publicly. He may be listening, I don't know. He may be watching. And if he is, that the board would consider that one year and understand what the, you know, if I were him, I would say, I want that one-year chance. I, I believe in the B-Walt. I've invested time and effort and countless hours. And I want to be a successful member of this project and this committee, not just the project. And then that, that becomes his, you know, that's on him. But I feel that as a, as a board, the right thing to do is to, I would potentially amend Ian's motion for the, the two-year to go to a one-year. And allow him to, reappoint him for that term and allow that expertise to continue to funnel through the committee and be considered. So that's all I have to say. No more comments.
To your amendment, I would accept that amendment, you know, based on comments I heard here. I don't know if it changes other board members, but I have nothing to add. Shelby, I think you said exactly my feelings. I think it's a, it would be a tremendous loss and set us back on that. And I do hear the comments that you can still attend, but it's difference attending and voting. And I think as we talk about, you know, kind of diverse talents and what people focus on, as we saw in the, the letters, I do think that that would be a loss for us to not have him there. I think that's a good compromise to go to one year with knowledge that this is, he's got one year. And if it's, if things continue, you, you note that there's been improvements, since it sounds like there's been discussions. If, if there aren't improvements, then that will not be a reappointment if those things continue. But, so I think I'd be fine with that amendment to my motion to move it from a two-year term to a one-year term.
If the board's going to move in that direction, I, I would just ask that, you know, with, with the one-year term, that if there's an incident where there's disparaging of town staff or misrepresenting the project or misrepresenting his role or speaking on behalf of the town inappropriately or inappropriate communications with any state agency or state official, that we would consider removing him mid-term.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is, I think this is a clear warning. I mean, you know, when we talk about, I mean, I think about sort of in the business world, right? You bring someone in. Unfortunately, this is, that's not the format here. You bring someone in, you have a conversation, and, you know, you kind of get a, a warning, just like we did before with the alcohol licenses, right? So to me, this is a very clear warning of expectations or setting of expectations. And it, look, this project is a massive one for this town. The amount of work that it's going to take at many levels, town staff, volunteer staff, maybe there's discussion of, you know, Friends of the Trail, that's what many communities have done to fundraise and, you know, contribute hours in, in many ways. It's going to be a massive undertaking. And Alan, to your point, this is just one slice of what ATSC is charged with. And they're doing some other great things, which in issues and correspondence, I'll speak to. But, yeah, I mean, I, I fully agree. There, there are no second chances here, right? So we've set the record straight. Again, I appreciate your courage in doing that and to do it respectfully. And I would, I would hope that the board would support the amended motion.
Okay.
Shall we second the amendment?
You seconded. I made, I accepted your amendment, so you?
Yes, I second. Thank you.
Okay. So moved and seconded. I think we've heard it, so I'm going to call for a vote on this. So all those in favor of the motion for appointing Don Byrne to the one-year term in Active Safety and Transportation? one-year term in Active Safety and Transportation Committee, raise their hands. For all those opposed. So it's four to one, four being present. And if the boards or desires, I'd be happy to have this conversation with Mr. Byrne in case he, I imagine he was listening, but I don't mind having that conversation, passing on what I heard. Okay, next is the Waste Management Exploratory Committee. With this, four members, we have four applicants that were received, three for reappointment, and one as a new applicant.
All right, let's see the motion. Are these all for the same term?
The motion isn't in here, but we need four members, so I would move to...
Assuming they're...
Do we have the terms, Kim?
It's an ad hoc.
Oh, it is ad hoc. That's right.
It's one year.
I smell that.
It's an indefinite.
Yep.
By an ad hoc, it's an indefinite term.
So I would move to appoint Lauren Berstadt, reappoint Lauren Berstadt to the Waste Management Exploratory Committee along with Katie Curtin-Mestra, Nathan Askew, and Peter Allen.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Economic Development?
Ian, if I just may, and you may have said this before, but I just want to thank everyone who applied here, not unlike the planning board process we just went through. It is, it's a little bit of a blessing and a curse to have, you know, an oversubscription of interest. And I would hope that, first of all, I want to thank everyone who decided not to submit letters of reappointment for their past service. It's, municipalities don't run without volunteers. The care about their community get involved. So thank you for your service and, and thank you to everyone who's applied. So don't not, you know, continue to participate and find ways, other committees, even if it's attending meetings. And I know that, I think Affordable Housing Trust, you added members as a result of those participating and attending meetings. And that's how you get sort of your feet wet. So it's an important part of the process.
Thank you very much for that. Thanks. And it's appropriate, because I think the next three committees we have, we have more applicants and positions.
Here we go.
So Economic Development Committee is the first. We have seven openings. We have six that have submitted letters seeking reappointment and three new applicants.
If I could just talk to the Economic Development Committee a little bit. So at this time last year, the Economic Development Committee had only four resident members. So last year, we added three more positions. And so really of these six individuals looking for reappointment, four have only been on for a year, because one also replaced another member who had left. The individual who was not seeking reappointment was one of the more experienced members. So we really, of the six seeking reappointment, only two have been on for more than a year. I think those two individuals had been on for three years. I want to say three, maybe four. So there isn't a lot of institutional memory on this committee. It is great that there is, you know, we're going to have to at least add one new applicant, which is excellent. And hopefully, at some point in the future, we will stagger these terms a little bit. So we're not doing this for everybody again. I guess I'm just making that recommendation here. I don't know if I should speak to that or, but just throwing it out there. So I just wanted to give people a little sort of background on the individuals who are applicants. And I would say certainly anybody who's only been a year really hasn't had the full opportunity to get involved. And I would say definitely we want to retain those members. So that's all. I will take questions.
Any questions? Yeah, I mean, this is a tough one. We've got great candidates. I hear what you're saying, though, and I think that's an important committee to have continuity on. And they're doing a lot of great work and have done great work. There are some on there that you talked about residents. Some are not non-resident, but business appointees as well.
Correct.
But I think those are similar terms as well, being new. When you talked about, is that correct?
I think there are two non-residents, if I look at the list. One's only a year. I think the other is three years.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry. So of, sorry, I keep scrolling back and forth here with this packet. For clarification, for those seeking appointment, does Miss, do we know if Mr. Rayleigh lives here? Scott Rayleigh?
He own, he, no, he's...
He's at Interplast. He's a general manager.
Yes.
Does not live here. Okay.
Correct.
David Bagden, does he live here?
It doesn't say. Okay. Thank you. And I know Sandra Kearney does, because she lives on my street. So I happen to know that.
Yes. But in agreement, also three strong new applicants for this committee.
Yep.
Does anybody have a motion?
Oh, boy.
I guess, I guess just my observation on the applicants. I would say that they're all strong applicants. I was really encouraged by reading their resumes and information that they submitted. You know, I guess of the three new applicants, the one that really stood out to me was David Bagden, being a long-term business owner here in town that has connections throughout the community and across many communities in the, in the area. I think he would be a fantastic addition to the EDC. But, you know, that's just my thoughts on the resumes. It's a tough choice.
I agree. I had similar thoughts, you know, in terms of relationships, in terms of his business, community advocate in other publications, his positions on the chamber and the connections there. It's something I think is valuable. Economic Development has been a member of the chamber, but it's, it's a big connection with many businesses here in town, but also businesses around. If they're looking to expand and the connections there could be important. You know, one of the things that we've had in the past with other folks is to have them come on as ambassadors. I know that there's been members that have joined, moved up into a committee member from ambassador. So that is an option for others as well. To be quite honest, though, I don't think we can go wrong across the board.
Right.
It's a strong list here. But I think that...
If you're ready for a motion.
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. And I do want to preface that, just to my comment, I will, in my motion, I will be including Sandy as part of that motion, not because she's a neighbor, but I have worked with her professionally in the past, when she was with a prior employer. And I've seen the work that she's done with the chamber. And I think she brings energy and enthusiasm to the chamber that, I mean, in her, in her work, that will be really helpful to helping the EDC navigate as it goes forward. So, and I think she'll be a great complement. So here we go. I move, oh, do I have to do the terms too?
They're all one-year.
They're all one-year. Thank God. Okay.
Sorry.
So I move to appoint Holly Kenny, Todd Alexander, Mark Verro, Mark Zeph, Dave Bagden, Scott Rayleigh, and Sandy Kearney. I think I got seven. To the Economic Development Committee for a one-year term.
I second.
So, okay. Comments?
Yeah, I have comments. I got it started.
I guess, just maybe a question for, for Member Keo. Has there been good participation from all the members? And, you know, active, regular participation of all of the current active members?
It's been pretty consistent, yes. Yes, across the board. And I don't know the full history of the EDC, but I think in the past couple of years, you know, the rehiring of an economic development coordinator has kind of supercharged the committee. And so I don't know, since I've only been on it for a year, you know, I can't compare and contrast, but it seems like a lot is getting done. And Zach, our economic development coordinator, seeks active participation from folks. And a lot of them are actually involved outside of the meetings as well, especially when it comes to things happening specifically in the downtown area. And I think we've seen a lot of change there. There's been a lot of activity generated by the EDC within the downtown.
Thank you. Having served on the committee prior to Sean, I'd say that a couple of things have really helped the committee. Certainly, our current EDC coordinator has breathed much new life into the economic development function of the town and our relationship with the business community within the town, as well as the ability to attract businesses into town. I also think the restructuring of the committee to lean more heavily towards residents and business owners, using town staff and support and administration assistance with the committee at work, but not sitting as members on the committee has enabled the subcommittees, it appears, such as with the grant program, to really work and thrive and go. So I appreciate Shelby's nomination. I support it. I do want to note that, and including, I appreciate you including Scott Rayleigh, and that he represents a larger business, an industrial business in an industrial zone. He's also on the Otis Street side of things. And so is, there's a lot of economic development that's going to happen in that corridor. And so I appreciate you including him in the nomination, along with other great people. This is, this is what we want. It's the blessing, you said, it's the blessing and the curse, right? And this is really was the intent of, you know, all the work that was done, the committee guidelines and handbooks, which is you want strong, well-functioning committees that people want to be on. And they come out to participate. And you have to consider the long-term role of the committee and the over and everything. So I appreciate everyone who is serving and has served and all the new applicants.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? Just, so Rod Schaffert was not in the motion.
He was not.
The question, when I looked at his letter, it was about appointment. Is it, is he on the committee now? This was a reappointment versus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, let me say that Rod's been a very active member of the committee. He was heavily involved in the annual award ceremony this year and making that happen and really pushed it forward. I mean, certainly a valuable member of the committee. I guess we can talk about the, you know, the thoughts on other candidates versus him.
Yeah. So Sean, to your point, and kind of looking to experience and appreciate you prefacing, giving us some recent history on the EDC and how it's working and the membership churn. I'm hearing in your question that, given that we've seen some changes in the EDC, that having Rod on there for continuity and based on his participation would be, again, not over anyone else, but that it would be really valuable. Is that a fair statement?
I mean, I think so. But I think part of it, too, is right now, the, the structure of the committee with it being seven one-year terms and sort of evaluating everybody based on just a single year, I think is difficult, you know?
Yeah.
And it's tough. The, the committee's evolving, right?
Yeah.
Because we added so many members, you know, it's important probably that we do stagger them. So, you know, we're not kind of doing an evaluation of everybody every year. I think part of my reasoning is he is a valuable member of the committee and is it just giving him a single year even fair?
Right. Sure.
Technically allowed.
So anyways, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any other comments?
How do we add someone? How do we grow even more?
It's difficult, but I think we got to...
No, I know. I mean, but I think that this is, I mean, I know when I sat on the EDC, which seems like dinosaurs age ago. I mean, that we, we kept talking about this ambassador program. So Sean, I would just, through you, I would take that back. And for anyone, whether they were seeking reappointment or appointment for the first time, figure out a way to engage these individuals. Because there are one-year terms right now and life, life changes, right? So maybe there is an opportunity in a way to engage folks in a way that is, and the ambassador program has always not, has been informal in that it doesn't require appointment by this board. But it doesn't mean that those roles aren't any less, you know, important. So.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Okay, four to one for the five being present, sorry. Okay, next is Conservation Commission. This isn't easy, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, Conservation Commission. We have three openings and four applications in front of us right now. Three reappointments and a new applicant. I would either entertain comments or a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that to appoint Justin Lumberg, Steve Henry, and Stephanie Kelly to the Conservation Commission for three-year terms.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any comments? I think I'm supportive of your motion. I think it's, again, it's a tough one. I know Kelly is a co-owner of Human Ice Cream, of course, but also working as a liaison to Recreation Commission, which is on an open space. But as she notes, too, as a non-resident, is kind of an exception we put in there. She is on these other committees, I think, with a new applicant and Mr. Henry's background in Fish and Wildlife, or I probably got that wrong. But in those divisions, I think, actually, it's, it's an interesting addition, I think, to what we have today on Conservation Commission. So I appreciate that and thank Kelly for her service and hopefully she can use on the other committees. But I think this is a, I'm in agreement with your motion.
Could not have said it better.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? It's five to zero for those appointments, five being present. Okay, our last one is for this evening is Sustainable Westboro. Again, five openings, staggered terms, four that are seeking reappointment, and three new applicants.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Peter Dumbek to a three-year term, Cheryl Thomas to a two-year term, Randy Pelish to a one-year term, Peter Flynn to a two-year term, and Nathan Askew to a one-year term. And I'll just provide my reasoning if that helps the rest of the board. I specifically did not include Mr. Egan in my motion because, um, quite frankly, I don't know if Mr. Egan really, while I'm fully supportive, I love having a business on Sustainable Westboro and was encouraged when he joined the committee. I don't believe that he fully believes in the mission of Sustainable Westboro and that has led to, I'll say, some difficult conversations. I would also say that I have not seen him participate in any of the activities of Sustainable Westboro outside of, of the occasional meetings that he attends. So, um, that is a committee that is super important for active participation and really we're looking for people. We just had a, a meeting last night to get new people involved with Sustainable Westboro. It was well-attended and we're looking to get people who are more passionate about bringing sustainable efforts to the town and driving those programs to help residents and help our businesses. And at this point, I have not seen that level of participat- participation with Mr. Egan. I would also just say that, um, while I find Andy Koningsberg has been a fantastic resource, he sits on a number of other committees and I think he's doing a fantastic job there. Peter Flynn has been a fantastic resource in helping us with some of the power choice issues that the committee has been dealing with. And Nathan Askew is, just really impressed me overall in regards to his, his passion and his drive on some topics that are near and dear to him, whether they're near and dear to everybody on the committee or across the town. Really, he's somebody that I think is very passionate about our environment and about sustainable issues. So that, that's, that's why my, my motion is the way it is.
Other comments?
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
I, I seconded so we could
Yeah.
Open the conversation. So I, my, my only comment, and I'm not, again, another situation where, if we can make the committee bigger, but, you know, great people who are looking for reappearance and three strong new applicants. I know that Andy Koningsberg has been active in the committee, he's been maintaining the website, um, and he's been looking for, you know, the opportunity to become a voting member of the committee, having been active in volunteering, um, really throughout the whole process of it. And so, um, you know, I know that you liaison with the committee and, and have, you know, a perspective as well.
Actually, I'm a voting member.
You're a voting member, I'm sorry, you're a voting member of the committee as well. So, you know, much as Sean is with the EDC and I was in the past, you're, you're there in the meetings on a regular basis, so I appreciate your input. That's all, my only comment is I, you know, if I had made the nomination, I probably would have included Andy just because of his work.
Yeah, he's doing fantastic work.
And had, and long enough to elevate him to the voting member status.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason why I was thinking Peter instead of Andy was because Andy's already on some other committees in, in the town and doing great work there. Peter has been doing a lot of work in support of, of research and data and whatnot in the committee. He was on, you know, helped with the CAP as well, so, you know, I see a lot of work there. Andy has done a fantastic job. I really, there's no, there's no bad decision here. Andy's done a fantastic job with the website. He shared with more about that work last night with the, with the residents that came to the meeting and, and it was really fantastic to see that. If you haven't had a chance to go out, take a look at the website, I encourage you to do so. So I'm really not opposed to either one being on the, I think they're fantastic. I just, I made that simple decision of Andy's doing work in other areas and I'd love to see Peter be on a committee and I think this is a good fit for him, so.
Can I ask a question? And I don't know this, I was trying to look it up quickly, but is presently, is waste management part of the charge of Sustainable Westboro?
It is not.
It is not? Okay, so, um, fully support, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm working with Nathan Askew on the Waste Management Committee, we just made that appointment, clearly knowledgeable, passionate about it. My, um, my hesitation, while, while I think it's sort of natural for that to be an additional component of Sustainable Westboro, it's not presently. And so my concern with having him on that committee, and not that he's only concerned with waste management, um, my concern with, would be that maybe sort of ex, him going in, his expectations would be like, this is going to be a focal point of the work of Sustainable Westboro and it's not even the charge of that committee at this time. And we just appointed him to the, um, the Waste Management Task Force. So, you know, I, I, to Alan's point, I sort of had in my mind that, um, this mix, but instead of Nathan, I would have, I would have put Andy Koningsberg's name there, given the work that he's done, that he's done. So I would just put that out there for the board to consider.
Excellent point. I'll just point, uh, so one of the advantages to having Nathan on Sustainable Westboro is just that exact reason. He can be Sustainable Westboro's liaison back to the waste, um, the Waste Management Task Force. So there's a ni- nice, natural fit, fit there. And, you know, Sustainable Westboro is definitely aware of that and, and there's a real potential that will fall underneath at some point. And just like we were talking to folks last night, we're looking, we want these types of topics to be part of our conversation in Sustainable Westboro. The Waste Management Task Force is obviously going to go much deeper into the subject and bring information back to this, this body. But we, we definitely see that important connection between Sustainable Westboro and, and that, that committee as well. So then we, we, that, that is one of the advantages, I think, of having Nathan on it is that we have that natural connection already. We don't have to assign somebody else
Sure.
In the committee.
I'll give my comments here, and I think I heard what you said about Chris Egan. I'm disappointed that the participation hasn't been there. I think when the original appointment, I thought it was, again, a good one to have someone kind of from the business community on there to, to think about it from that side and to give those opinions, so, but I, I hear what you're saying. That's fine. I think, um, I actually agree with you on Andy. I think he's done a great job, but he's got a lot on his plate and, you know, as we try to diversify out here with, um, new people and whatever, I think that's great. Nathan, um, and again, these stuff's good, I mean, I think, passionate, um, my one concern there, and I think, sorry, town meeting is, um, and I think this, again, not negative, so I think I'm supportive of, of what your motion was, but I think my concern there is that the, um, passion could, um, over-trump collaboration sometimes. I think as we talked about, hey, are there ways, could either this be delayed or can we negotiate? It was kind of absolute no. It was, this is what it is and I'm focused and I'm going. And, and again, that's just a small experience that I've had, so I don't want to hold it up there, so I think that's why I'm in support of there. And so I think that's why I would lean to your motion as opposed to Andy, and it's not a knock on Andy, it's just that, again, as we try to, um, kind of diversify out folks on boards, I think this is a good opportunity to do that. I think he'll probably still participate. It is, as I said, passionate, but he's got, especially with the Active Transportation Safety, as we said, Conservation Commission, which I believe he's chair or still chair of that one, Open Space Preservation as well, so, um, that's enough. Any other comments?
You know, I'd just say I, I think other individuals on this board know these folks better. You know, it has been a strong committee, it has been doing a tremendous amount of work over the past year. I, you know, looking to move quickly, a lot of sort of oars in the water, so I think it does make sense for us to have, you know, the position filled with folks who are looking to move forward on those goals. You know, I, I would support Patrick's motion.
Okay, anything further? If not, we have the motion and was seconded. All those in favor of the motion, respondents raising their hands. It's five to zero, five being present. Thank you for that. Okay. Four minutes ahead, but I thought I was going to be much further ahead, so I apologize. Issues and correspondence of the Select Board. Shelby, I'm going to start with you this evening.
Okay, thank you. So as I mentioned, so I'm the liaison to the Active Transportation Safety Committee, had a, um, great meeting yesterday. The, and I'll forward some of this information to the board, I apologize, I didn't do it in advance, but the Safe Roots to School audit of the Hastings School was presented at that meeting. And, um, so there's a PowerPoint and very, very interesting about some of the findings there. And, um, so a, a number of issues have been identified as part of that audit and obviously there's, there's work to be done to address, you know, next steps and kind of how there might be some immediate fixes to, and keep in mind that Safe Roots to Schools also is all about encouraging walkability and rollability to schools. And, um, even though Hastings is in, there's, there's a large catchment of students that are within quarter-mile, half-mile, um, distance, very few, if any, actually, uh, roll or walk to school. So there's an opportunity there. So anyway, I will forward that presentation to the board just for your FYI. The ATSC has recently made some enhancements to the website to bring it up current, so the chair had recommended that all the school audits of Safe Roots to School and other documents be there centrally, so when people are asking about complete streets, et cetera, there's one kind of repository that's there. And there's also a nice connectivity from that, from their webpage to the Police Department when folks are asking about, I want speed bumps or speed-related issues to be addressed so that there's good connection there with, um, the Police Department where those requests should be fielded. Also want to point out that recently, the ATSD worked, well, worked for many months with Mass DOT and I don't know if you've seen the improvements on Milk Street at West Meadow Plaza. So, uh, there was that crosswalk right before you sort of went up the ramp, really dangerous area, um, so working with Mass DOT, they, um, the, um, crosswalk has been moved, so ADA accessibility has been improved in that area, um, on both sides, and the crosswalk will be removed and painted over, but it was due to weather that that has been delayed. So, um, I think that that will be great for folks living and, uh, working and wanting to, um, access the businesses there, so that's a great enhancement. There are also some improvements made, um, over in the Hundreds Road, um, area and for sidewalks and, um, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that, that, I, I don't think we saw this, but the Safe Roots to School Gold Level status was, makes, um, Westboro grant-eligible, um, so that's an important designation and I guess Safe Roots to School is now opening up for high school as well, so previously it wasn't inclusive of that and so, um, that would create an opportunity for an audit there, which is just part of the Safe Roots to School process. That is all I have for issues and correspondence.
Sean?
I'll go. Yes. Uh, so the Library Building Committee met today. The last time I was here, I spoke about they were issuing a request for qualifications. They, the seven firms have responded to the RFQ and so they're going through those, but, um, the feedback was a lot of strong candidates within that group. Also, the LPA, the, um, architect gave an update, they've had a, done a design charrette and they received a lot of feedback on that. They're going to, coming to our next meeting, which will be July 7th, and providing updates with slides. And the architects also mentioned that they went to a recent, uh, one-stop shop with town departments and they really appreciated that. They were able to get feedback from the Building Department, the Police Department and DPW they mentioned specifically. So things are all moving forward there with expectation that an RFP would be going out hopefully by, um, later in July. Additionally, you know, we were able to, um, give our congratulations to Lieutenant Halas earlier, much to his chagrin. This, this, pardon me, this June 30th will be the last day in town for our Deputy Fire Chief Jason Fersky, and I would just like to say thank you to him for all his hard work and congratulations on becoming the Natick Fire Chief, well-deserved. That's it. I, I stole that one.
Alan?
Two quick things related to the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust. With respect to the vote at town meeting about the property at Three Baylor Avenue.
Yep.
Town councils provided the trust with the memorandum that would facilitate transfer responsibility, um, from the town to the trust. We'll be reviewing and should be approving that at our July 9th meeting, would come back to be an agenda item here on the 19th, and then we'd move forward with that. The last thing the trust is working on on that is the insurance coverage when it becomes part. It'll be our first property we own and first insurance policy, so, um, learn as we go. Also, um, we, we've talked at a couple of meetings, very briefly, about the residences at Westboro Station and the, um, the belief that the affordability requirement on the property was expiring. The Affordable Housing Trust allocated funds and hired, um, a housing organization, MCO Housing, that specializes in this to identify any, um, programs that might exist as it's an existing development to maintain the affordability. And the property owners were amenable to that, depending on what the program was. The feedback, um, from the consultant was that there aren't programs available because the way the property was originally permitted, um, the affordable restriction should be in perpetuity, regardless of the financing arrangements. And so, um, the town has, um, has confirmed that under some pretty extensive review with town council and has sent a letter to the property owners that that's our expectation. And they've been invited, if they wish to, um, attend a future Select Board meeting.
I was wondering what the action would be?
Yeah. So that, that's the action there. It'll be, it'll also be reviewed for, you know, before it goes out, but the Housing Trust and Youth and Family Services will be sending, um, a letter about the current status to the residents who are in the affordable units, so that they're aware.
That's great.
You can imagine there's a lot of concern.
Oh, yeah. It's good news.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Patrick?
All right, uh, just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to say, um, I attended the Touch a Truck event, um, two weeks ago, a fantastic event. Really saw some great participation from the various different departments, they brought some of the new equipment. DPW brought a massive bulldozer, my granddaughter climbed all over, it was great. So fantastic event, well-attended, and I would also like to say thank you to the First United Methodist Church for, for supplying the space for that. You know, the food trucks, it was really great to see everybody out on such a wonderful night. I guess a couple of other things I'll just mention. I've talked a little bit about Sustainable Westboro. We did have our event last night and well-attended, um, some great ideas from community members that, um, you know, we hadn't met before, so it was really good to see them come out and, and talk, and I certainly encourage, uh, others in the community that have sustainable questions or, or, or ideas or want to participate, to please, um, you know, participate and come to our meetings or reach out to, um, the committee and we'll be happy to get you involved at whatever level you'd like to participate. Just a quick ask to get on a future agenda, um, the topic of Chauncey Beach. And I've talked about this in the past, the crosswalk down there, but Chauncey Beach, I drove by it, I drive by it all the time, but drove by it the other day and a group of people, I actually were climbing through a hole in the fence to get to the volleyball area. So it's great that we've opened up the beach, but I'd like to also hear how it's going. I want to understand if there's been any issues, trash issues, police issues, anything like that, so just a future consideration for a, a future board meeting to look at how that's going down there.
Great idea.
Okay.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
If you don't mind. There was, I received a couple of questions, um, There was, I received a couple of questions about the, you know, was Chauncey going to be treated? And there was some social media chatter of, well, no, there are no lifeguards, so they're not treating the beach and that's actually not related. So I just want the public to understand that, that the, I mean, obviously, the decision about lifeguards is based on staffing and so we've, we've discussed that. But the, not treating the vegetation in the water is due to the study that we voted and appropriated at town meeting and, and that whole process that they actually can't in order to, I guess, understand kind of the underlying effects of vegetation. So the two are not related, but I can certainly understand why people might, you know, connect those dots. So, thank you, Ian.
Great. Just a few things on my side. We did have a municipal building committee last week. We are very close to, to closing up on the Forbes Building, but our report is we did get an update on the rooftop units, as we know is one of the big issues. The, those have been with all the replacement parts and the monitoring that we're doing, installed, knock on wood, things have been going okay with those, with the heat, but we continue to monitor that. We do have a meeting coming up, we're in for more updates, but we're hopeful that, that we're, that kind of is our last big piece to closing out. There is also some work being done regarding the generator and this is a kind of a change, I guess I'd call a change order, but the, there's an issue with the fuel for the generator gets filled from the top and right now to do that, it's putting up a couple of ladders to get the fuel up there. So we're looking to build basically a catwalk system, which was not part of the original plan, but gone out for bids to get a company, a welding basic company to come and build that catwalk just to make it safe for fueling that generator. There are funds remaining in the Forbes project that would be able to cover that, but that's just a piece that is being worked on. So, again, positive news there. Committee continues to, to meet and, and monitor, but I think that, again, fingers crossed that we're close to final closeout on the Forbes Building. Just a couple of other things. Just congratulations to both the, the boys and girls, tennis team from the high school. Both teams, pretty amazing, making it to the state finals. Unfortunately, both lost in really hard-fought matches to teams, but just a, a great season for them and just passing along, congratulations to, to them. And then the final piece, just a word of thanks to the Recreation Department, the Fourth of July Committee, Police Department, Fire Department, DPW, all those, I know missing people, all those involved, but just a, a great event down at Bay State Commons last Friday, I guess. Times running together, it's crazy. But again, just a great community event, all of, you know, from seeing and was, was there, not for a tremendous amount of time, but just seeing the, the number of people there was amazing, but from comments that night, but even following that, just people are just so positive about it. So just, again, great to have that back, great to have that community spirit out there. So again, thanks to all those involved and thanks to those in the community that showed up. It's just really, again, a wonderful event for us as a, a community and to, and to have it in a safe area downtown was, was great. And that is all that I had. So.
Move to executive session?
Love that motion.
I move to enter into an executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Fire Chief Patrick Purcell. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the following unions, police supervisors. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate at Zero Ruggles Street and 231 Turnpike Road.
I declare that an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the board's bargaining and negotiating position. The board will not be reconvening in an open session following this executive session. Can I have a second to the motion?
Second, huh?
Okay, roll call, vote.
Welch, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Keough, yes.
Marshall, yes.
We are moving into executive session. Thank you, everybody. And thank you to Westboro TV.
Poor Aiden, he's dark over there.
Turn the lights on, Aiden.